We are starting the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It is Tuesday, July 16th, 2024 at 6:45 PM and we are ready to go. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise if you can.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam City Clerk, we ready for the roll call?
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bruin?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Okay. Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
Yes, there is, Mayor. So I'd like to report on June 19th that the City Council voted unanimously to authorize the city attorney to negotiate and execute a settlement agreement related to the impact fees at the Velco Rise Development Project. The details of those, that agreement are described in the agenda packet and the agreement is actually included along with Agenda Item 10. The council will be discussing two fee waivers related to that settlement agreement when the council hears that item.
Okay. Thank you. There are no ceremonial items. Are there any postponements and orders of the day, Madam City Manager?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right, so let's go move to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for people wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion. Today, individual speakers will be limited to two minutes. And how many speakers do we have, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, I have 18 people requesting to speak. So it looks we have, looks like we have 19 people currently requesting to speak. And that includes those requesting to speak virtually.
Okay, so we will allow each speaker to speak for two minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. We will start with DB followed by Tracy K followed by Anita Shamaraj. Welcome, DB.
Good evening, everyone. I don't know, I'm the first one. I'm a new resident of Cupertino, just moved here for a few years. I live close to this Schofield. So I, as everyone knows, somebody is going to build a high building of 23 units there in a small, single-family lot. So yeah, myself and all my neighbors feel very bad about this. I come in here because Cupertino, here we have a very good community, very good quality environment. Yeah, everyone know Cupertino's house is very expensive, but I still come to here and I enjoy this environment. Suddenly, somebody is going to destroy this environment. I'm, I'm very, feel very bad about, about this. Yeah, you are putting 23 units, 23 is a whole street, it's 20, about 23 something unit. You're putting a whole street in a, in a small lot. I'm not sure why somebody like to do this. I know there's a business consideration, but why they, they don't consider something else? They can still make money and keep everyone in the community happy and not destroy the community. Yeah, I'm new to here. Yeah, thanks for the, the city and all my neighbors who the many generations make such a beautiful community. I thought, I just don't want to see this community is being destroyed. I, I want to live here for a long time, but I hope there's a, a solution rather than build a 23 units here. Okay. That's my, what I want to say. Okay.
Thank you. And Tracy K followed by Anita followed by Rajiv. Just a reminder to have your hand raised or speaker card submitted in the next six minutes and 45 seconds. Welcome, Tracy.
Thank you. Hi, City Council. I stand here with just a few residents tonight, but please know that for every resident you see here, there are at least probably 10 others who feel the same way, who are just unable to attend this meeting tonight. So we're just here to make an ask. Please do not let single-family homes turn into multi-unit apartment buildings on Schofield or anywhere else in Cupertino. The neighbors adjacent to the home in question are extremely upset that they might be living next to an apartment with up to 22 extra cars instead of a home. As someone who has lived in apartments for over a decade in New York City and San Francisco with no car, I fully believe that apartments with no parking have a place and that is near downtown areas with transit and walkable access to amenities. If you've walked along Schofield, you will know that to get anywhere, many of those residents are going to want a car. So where are all those cars going to go? How are they going to enter and exit in the morning when farrier parents are also trying to drop off their children? If you let this development progress, you are impinging upon privacy, safety, just to name a few. I also wanted to briefly touch on City Hall. Just a question, per the November 2023 council meeting, the decision was to explore a P3 public-private partnership, not to buy a building for temporary City Hall. So I'm just curious why we deviated from this guidance without informing the public? And if you have not deviated from this decision and still intend to explore a P3, what exactly is the role of 19400 Stevens Creek in this? The public is only being given part of the picture and this is a lack of transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Next we have...
Excuse me. Please, please, please no applause to out of respect for people who might have different views than the speaker. Thank you.
Next we have Anita followed by Rajiv followed by Rusty Britt. Oh, welcome, Anita.
Hello. Good evening, council members. My name is Anita Shamaraj and I'm a resident of Schofield, currently studying at Cal. I would like to share my thoughts on building a 23-unit complex on Schofield. In order to get to middle and high school on time, I would have to leave school more than 40 minutes before it started just to beat free of traffic and would often have to wait outside my first-period classroom in the cold for at least 30 minutes before school started. Having to wake up so early just to get to school on time would stress me out and leave me extremely tired during the school day, impacting my performance at school. Now with this development on Schofield, I'm worried that the traffic around this area will become much worse and it is the current students trying to get to school that will be negatively impacted the most. Additionally, I'm concerned on how this development will be able to keep prices low for its residents. The Velco Rise project was touted as an investment in low-income housing, but has designated only about 30% of its units for affordable housing. However, affordable housing...
Excuse me, this item is on the agenda later today? If you're, if you have comments on the Velco Rise project? If you have comments on items that are not on the agenda, you could continue.
Okay, well, I am just struggling to see how the Schofield development will be able to enforce low-income housing and how it assuages traffic concerns, especially since these concerns have not been addressed during the Velco Rise project. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Next we have Rajiv Shamaraj followed by Rusty Britt followed by Edward Britt.
Good evening, council members. I live on Schofield Drive. That's my daughter. I think she expressed her displeasure, you know, she struggled, she and her brother struggled a lot when they were, when they were studying here, you know, traffic on farrier is a mess. I think I would request the city staff and the council members just come and stand when the school is in session in the morning and in the afternoon. From 2:00 to 3:00, we can't even get out of the house. The cars are blocked, chalk a block. There is no gap, even, even the, the drivers don't care about the driveways. And then, and then I can't even open the curtains of my house, the windows for the sun to come in because there are peeping toms looking at the house. And this is, these streets were designed about 70, 75 years ago where, you know, the, the peak traffic was not taken into consideration, the number of cars that are driving, the drop-in, drop-outs and other stuff. And then on top of that, you know, three years back, the city council are, without their knowledge, the farrier expanded three more classrooms and added another 200 cars on the, on the street. I've been living in this Schofield Drive for last 20, 25 years. I've seen every year the traffic increases and the mess it creates for the kids, the kid, the way the development that's planned, that's, that's proposed development is just 500 meters away from the school. And you could see the kids trying to make it to the school on time and trying to run and the kids, the parents dropping them off on the street. This is a traffic nightmare that's in works and it will get really ugly. I would strongly urge you guys to come and stand there a few days in, a few days in the, when the school starts between 2:00 and 3:00 and in the morning from 8:00 to 9:00 and we'll see what the mess that, that the city, the city has created on its hands. With that, I strongly urge you not, not to go forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rajiv. Next we have Rusty Britt followed by Edward Britt followed by R. Jerry Lamy. Welcome, Rusty.
My name is Rusty Britt. I live on Pepper Tree Lane. I'm here to express my unhappiness with the dense housing that's, that's being proposed on Schofield. I feel very uncomfortable speaking before this, before you all, but I want to speak to the people who are out there and not here and why aren't you here? Why aren't you telling the city council how unhappy you are with this high-density housing that's being proposed? I'm reminded of the quotation, "The only thing necessary for bad things to happen is for good people to do nothing." Don't do nothing.
Thank you, Rusty. Next we have Edward J. Britt followed by R. Jerry Lamy followed by Vivek Sadeo. Welcome, Edward.
Good evening, City Council, members of the television audience. I'm Ned Britt and like my wife Rusty, who you just heard, I'll tell you that we live on Pepper Tree Lane as, which is close to Freea School. And we see many instances of traffic congestion, close calls with kids being in near accidents trying to cross the street. I've even seen one child hit on the side of a car and spun over to the curb. I want to point out to the council members that if they support the proposed measure on Schofield, it would be an example of gross negligence to students. If the high-density development is approved, we may file a lawsuit trying to counteract the development on the basis of extreme danger to schoolchildren crossing the street. The lawsuit would put a record into the court proceedings that would be available later. The record of the lawsuit would affirm that we tried to warn the council about, the current members about the danger. The legal record will show that some members, if, if it's approved, voted for the measure even after being advised about the possible reckless endangerment. Later, if there's an accident and persons are injured, there could be a liability lawsuit. The court records from our previous lawsuit could then be recalled. The record would show that certain council members voted to approve the Schofield development even though they've been warned in advance about the hazard. It might be possible they could even share some liability personally. Therefore, we urge the council to reject the proposal and don't build a high-density housing on the Schofield site for the good of the city, for the safety of the children, and to avoid their own possible exposure to liability. Thank you.
Thank you, Edward. Next we have R. Jerry Lamy.
Excuse me, I'm going to repeat the request that to not, not applaud when people speak. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. I've been here three weeks in a row now. Tonight, I turned in another 2,500 signatures, bringing our total to over 5,000 residents that are reaching out. I think it's closer to 6,000. City Council needs to understand that farmers' markets are not the same. Creekside is not like DeAnza. One company is not like another company. Up until today, I've always been supported by the Cupertino City Council. I don't understand why we're not getting this message through. We need to be put on the agenda. We've got two weeks left at DeAnza for sure. I've asked you guys to come out and to see the farmer's market. DeAnza is not a city property, it's estate property. Your residents want a market within your city. They want to be here either at Civic Center or on Torrey Avenue. They want to, they want to be at Memorial Park. They do not want to be at DeAnza, they want to be here with you. Why are you not listening to 6,000 residents that have signed the petition so far? We need a home. We need your help. We need you to work with us. We need a path to survive. West Coast farmer's markets is different. My farmers bring fruits and vegetables to the city at a lower price. They're charged less. It's a huge difference. Come out to DeAnza on Sunday and see for yourself. The mayor, you've told me that you've been there, I've never seen you there. I'm there every Sunday. Mr. Vice Mayor, I'd love to see you there. Come out and see us and see what this is about. Check the signatures that I've turned in. I've turned in over 80 pages full of signatures. We really, really need to have you guys understand and I would love to be put on the agenda.
Thank you. That is your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Vivek Sadeo followed by Dr. Anjali Sadeo followed by Barbara Yang. Welcome, Vivek.
Good evening, Cupertino City Council and my block members and city residents. I'm Vivek Sadev, I'm the block leader for the Faria block and I live like four houses down from where this proposed Schofield building is going to take place. So I feel that I'll be sandwiched between this multifamily unit with 23 units and the Faria Elementary School and the traffic will be terrible. So I really don't support this kind of building. I think ideologically, I definitely am for affordable housing. I myself own like 25 such units which I rent out to people all over the country for affordable housing. But in Cupertino City, we have the Oak Center where there is affordable, like multifamily units being built, also in the, the mall which got, you know, we are building there. So there are sites where such things can take place. Here, I'm here to represent my block and I don't feel that my personal ideology of affordable housing should be applied, enforced onto the people whom I am representing. So I urge the council to consider this, that there is a school with lot of traffic we are already facing and this multifamily unit will not be appropriate at that location. There are many other locations in the city where such construction can take place and we should support it. So lastly, you know, I think we are all neighbors and friends. I have worked with Hung Way at Portal Elementary School and we have met, I met Kitty Moore and she's very supportive of this. So I think the council is very responsible and I trust you guys to make a good decision and not let this go through.
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you.
Next we have Dr. Anjali Sadeo followed by Barbara Yang followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Dr. Anjali Sadeo.
Thank you. Thank you to the city council for giving us all time to talk to you all about this very important issue. I think a few of my neighbors have already spoken about this and so the traffic is, I think, the biggest thing that we are worried about, the fact that there'll be possibly 23 and maybe more, maybe, you know, 46 cars on the street with these 23 units really worries us all. It's, it's definitely a nightmare when school's in session, but it, if this proposed unit goes in place, we are probably looking at even more traffic and probably can't leave our houses at all. So that's the one thing that we definitely are worried about. I think the, the quality of our lives will, will definitely be a problem. I think air quality in our neighborhood will get worse with all these people there with the cars and unfortunately, as somebody else has already pointed out, there is really no transit, no public transport where we live. I will also speak for myself and sorry to bring up my own problems, but you know, there are times when I'm on call and I have to rush out of the house and I've lived there for many, many years hoping very easily to get to the hospital when I've needed to. Since the pandemic, I don't know what's happened, but things are definitely an emergency more often than they used to be. And so I will put in personally a plug for myself as well. And so thank you all for your time and I'm hoping you'll do the right thing by us. Thanks.
Thank you, Anjali. Next we have Barbara Yang followed by Jennifer Griffin followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Barbara.
Good evening, council member, mayor and vice mayor. My name is Barbara Yang. I live on 20805 Schofield Drive for the past 40 years. I think I'm one of the oldest residents among my neighborhood. When I heard about this meeting, first I thought, come on, I never got any postcard. Is this a joke? Are you serious? We're going to have a big monastery in the quiet neighborhood? I really worried about the safety of children and myself. When I, why do I say myself? Because many, many times I have to park my car on the other side of the street in order to get in and out, especially my husband, my mother are ill. And many times, you know, since I'm the only driver, I have to come down, place like a policeman, tell them, please let me out. And when my friends visit me, they say, what's going on? Is this a central station of New York? And I keep apologies to them. Speaking of traffic, if you approve this unit of 23, I thought, my God, every unit is going to have at least husband and wife plus two extra parking permits, that means four. Four times 23 is 92. How are they going to park the car? And how are we going to be in and out? So I'm inviting all of you to be in my shoes and I'm sure you all live in the city of Cupertino too. I love this city. I have been here forever. I don't want to leave this city. So please have some empathy. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. As the city attorney has already requested, please respect all speakers. Clapping and cheering can disrupt and intimidate and is strongly discouraged.
And people that continue to clap will be asked to leave.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Jennifer Griffin. I'm just going to start, I was going to talk about two things tonight. One of them is, I'll just, I was absolutely astounded when I saw what the plans for Schofield were. This is an SB 330 slash builder's remedy. Everybody's very, very concerned about it because it is setting a precedent for Cupertino. I just am very scared about what would happen with this, particularly the doc, the poor doctor who can't get out to go to the hospital to take care of patients. The other thing I'm going to talk about is, as you all know, I have been following the Los Altos housing element. I'm not going to talk about anything about housing elements except Los Altos. I have personal reasons to follow this. As you know, my family church, which my grandparents were original members of, has its parking lot in the Los Altos housing element. Two other churches on the same street, different denominations have their parking lots, not, not where the church sanctuary is, but the parking lots are in the Los Altos housing element. I understand that Senator Glazer has put it forth and it's become now there will be an audit of HCD's handling of the six-cycle housing element. There will be 10 test cities. I am proposing that Los Altos be one of them because I cannot condone having a church parking lot in a housing element. Are they going to come and force the church to give up its housing element? Is this what Buffy Wicks wants with God in everyone's backyard? There is separation of church and state in this country. I know that well. But I do, I cannot condone having my, my grandmother's church's parking lot in a housing element. It's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have Lisa Warren followed by Toby Levitt followed by Lee Jiang. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So in April of this year, the city council enacted ordinances for the development agreements of two projects, the Kimco Cupertino Village Boutique Hotel and John Vidovic's DeAnza Hotel. I'm here to thank Kimco and Mr. Vidovic for doing the right thing by complying with the city's efforts to improve the safety of creatures and the impacts to the quality of life in our community. In both cases, the developers agreed to respect and include the city's new requirements related to the protection of birds and the importance of minimizing obtrusive and unnecessary lighting. In both of these hotel projects, the ordinances, their ordinances now have this language, like I said, in April. The development of the property, part of the ordinance stated, "The development agreement shall be amended to include a section, new section 3.4.2.1," which shall read as follows, "Developer agrees to comply with the Bird Safe and Dark Sky Ordinance, Cupertino Municipal Code Chapter 19.102, Glass and Lighting Standards." I again thank those two developers for respecting that and I hope that any developments that follow that may be able to wiggle out of this will do the same and respect our community, our environment, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Next we have Toby Levitt followed by Lee Jiang followed by Gordon Liu. Welcome, Toby.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Toby Levitt. I'm the executive director of San Francisco Shakespeare Festival and I'm here to invite you and all you to the play. Free Shakespeare in the Park begins performances in Memorial Park this weekend. We will be performing at 6:00 PM this Saturday and Sunday and the next two weekends through August 4th. The play is The Tempest by William Shakespeare. The tempest takes place on a magical island where Prospero and his daughter Miranda have been living in exile for 12 years and then Prospero uses his magic to conjure a storm and sends the fairy Ariel to shipwreck his usurping brother Antonio's boat on the island. The play is a beautiful romance that shows Prospero's journey from wanting to pursue revenge against his brother to instead offering him his forgiveness. I hope you'll come see the play so we can take this journey together. We would not be here without your leadership, so huge thanks to the city council for your support and advocacy. I also particularly want to thank the 27 individual donors for their support and you for your support from the Mayoral Fund and the support of our sponsors, San Jose Water, Cupertino Library Foundation, and Rotary Club of Cupertino. Speaking of Rotary, we're speaking at their lunch meeting tomorrow and they'll be selling snacks before each show as a service to the community, so come early and buy a snack from Rotary. You can still help spread the word. There's a downloadable flyer on SF Shakes's website, sfshakes.org, and an event you can share on Facebook, Eventbrite, and LinkedIn. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing you in the park.
Thank you, Toby. Next we have Lee Jiang followed by Gordon Liu followed by Mei Shi Huang. Welcome, Lee.
Good evening, council members. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to express my deep concern as a neighbor lived in Schofield neighborhood. We, I have deep concern about the project that proposed a 23 unit on a heart of a single-family zone. The first thing is that I have deep concern about the public safety because you think that 24, 23 unit will bring potentially two car per, maybe two car per unit and also visitors. So it's potentially about more than 100 cars that will bring in this Schofield. It's not a very big street, it's a small street. And more of, more, more important is that there is the Farora Elementary School that's very close to the neighborhood and we have the parents that are picking up and dropping off their children, which will already bring a very big traffic in the school, school time. And if the increasing traffic and congestion will bring a big safety issue into the, into the community. I'm concerned about the kids and also the senior people who's, that will have to, will have the quieter time and to enjoy the quieter neighborhood and the street. And the other, the second thing is that the proposed is a four-story and there's no, even no setback among the side yard of the neighbors. And the neighbors are all of single family, with one story or two stories, so they will be overshadow the community and bring no light... and bring no light access to their neighbors. And so, in conclusion, this is disrespectful to the community. And also, it's the developer who is going to take advantage of the builder remedy and SB three thirty. That is totally...
Thank you. That is your time.
Thank you. So I urge the city council to stop...
You're muted. You're muted. Thank you. Next, we have Gordon Liu, followed by Mei Shuai Wong, followed by Kevin Liu. Welcome, Gordon.
This is Gordon Liu. I have been living in Schofield for more than thirty-five years. It has been very beautiful, quiet street. Okay? And now, if city change, correct something to approve the permit, look like the city dropped a honeycomb bomb, then the bee, all the bee come out. Twenty-three unit, maybe fifty people. So fifty bees come to bite people, disturbing the neighborhood. So please take into consideration. Do not do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. Next, we have Mei Shuai Wong, followed by Kevin Liu, followed by Beverly Batson. Welcome, Mei Shuai.
Hi, this is Mei Shuai. All the Cupertino councilmember. Okay, when I first heard this proposal, I was kind of shocked because it's one house lot and they're going to build twenty-three, you know, units. So this is kind of, to me, is kind of a little bit odd. So I don't know how they measure this twenty-three unit is going to put in this lot because twenty-three unit, they can live maybe two or four, two, three, four in one unit. So for this traffic, it's very, congestion is very bad. On this neighborhood, I lived there over thirty-four years. And then every morning and after the school time, I have to measure what I have to do. If I'm going to do something, I have to avoid this traffic. And by the way, for the children's safety, you know, because the elementary school is there. So we have to watch. Sometimes I have to kind of volunteer, you know, goes to there and watch when the traffic time. So because it's really a concern for my, for the children, for all the neighborhood, for my dog too. So, thank you. So I hope, you know, the city man, the council can reconsiderate, you know, for this proposal. Okay, thank you. Okay, bye.
Thank you, Mei Shuai.
Mayor, we have hit the thirty-minute limit for our initial round of oral communications. The oral communications would ordinarily be continued by rule till after the city manager report.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, how many more speakers do we have?
Yes, mayor, we have four requests to speak in community hall and five hands raised virtually. So we have nine requests in total.
Okay. All right, let's move it to the end. And this would be after the city manager's report. Is that what you're saying? Okay, so that's the decision. Excuse me. Councilmember Moore, you had a comment?
Just a quick question. It looks like we, on page four, the total time period for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour. I'm not sure if we have the thirty minutes written in here.
Councilmember Moore, so I refer you to section eight point three of the council procedures manual.
Okay, so that's not something that the residents would know about when they come in?
No, of course not. But we, of course, the procedures manual balances your ability to deliberate with their right to speak.
Okay, I would prefer that that was listed in the agenda when people come in so that they can anticipate that if they don't make their comments quickly, that they might not be able to come back later during the meeting.
Sure, that does make sense. And I can work with the clerk's office to try to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so, Councilmember Chow?
So we can, the mayor or maybe we can, the council as a whole can choose to continue to hear the rest of the comments since we don't have many items today. So that's a discretion, right?
Is that how it works, Mr. City Attorney?
So the mayor has discretion under the rules of procedure to reorder, to change the order of business to efficiently conduct council's business. The council could also change the order of business by motion.
Okay.
Okay.
So would I like to...
How many speakers do you say? Excuse me, sorry.
Nine speakers, eighteen minutes with a two-minute allotment.
Okay, should we just go ahead with the speakers?
Yeah, the time the agenda says it ends at nine. So I would like to make the motion that we allow the public comments to continue.
I don't think we need a motion. We'll just continue with the oral comments.
The mayor can rule without a motion unless you object, Councilmember Chow.
Do we even need a motion? Can we just continue?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. So let's continue, Madam City Clerk.
Okay, thank you, mayor. Next, we have Kevin Liu, followed by Beverly Batson, followed by R. Wong. Welcome, Kevin.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Kevin Liu. I'm a longtime neighbor on Schofield Drive. My parents still live there right now. As one of the last speakers, I follow many of my neighbors on Schofield Drive and Pepper Tree Lane and stand in support of them to deny the application of this multifamily unit. I'll try to make this brief, but I think we can generally create a plan for the city that meets the additional need for housing units without placing such a heavy toll on the neighbors in Cupertino. And this really does set quite a, you know, dangerous precedent going forward. I mean, any neighborhood can be essentially changed rapidly overnight with these state rules. I understand in some respect, your hands are tied. You know, there's the state authority and the cities and counties sometimes don't have any means to push back on this. But perhaps we can work, you know, in cooperation with builders and developers to, you know, reshape our city or develop some amazing high-density urban centers with the right amenities that can support these additional units. So I think there could be a win-win here. But all the people that came out today, it literally was one email. And this is what you get. You get people pretty fired up about this. So just ask you to consider that. These are longtime neighbors, great people, and they care very, very deeply about their community. And I think just want the council members to be very thoughtful of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Next, we have Beverly Batson, followed by R. Wong. Welcome, Beverly.
Yes. I address all of you, respectively. I'm Beverly Batson. My grandfather was the mayor of Sunnyvale in the sixties. Sir Francis Scott Key was my uncle. I believe in America. I believe in the United States and freedom to speak. I believe in the Constitution and respecting others' opinions. I am not anybody, I'm not housed. I believe, I grew up in Cupertino with respectful policemen, sheriff. And my grandfather was in charge of Georgia Pacific, probably built this building with the walls of MDF. I didn't plan on coming tonight, but I saw a lot of kids jumping on your beautiful statue outside, and I told them, get off of it. It's a liability. You need a sign saying, don't jump on that. Suggestion, you don't want any more lawsuits. I'm suing somebody here in Cupertino because lack of respect. They need a shelter here. It's despicable to let people sleep at churches and not respect them as human beings and have dignity or morals. We have lost that in Cupertino, Saratoga, Los Gatos especially. I've been assaulted ten times there. The sheriff is my best friend. Recently, a homeless man was, I don't know if he died, but he was hit in the crosswalks. You don't have enough cameras on these crosswalks. He was hit and flew six feet and ended up in an emergency room. Nobody seemed to care, except for the EMTs. I suggest you put cameras on every corner of Dianza and Stevens Creek immediately for safety. Our crosswalks, they're speeding through, and the sheriff is there all the time, and they're not respecting people walking through the crosswalks with children and bikes.
Thank you, Beverly. That is your time.
Oh, okay.
A two minute has elapsed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Stop this Schofield project.
Okay, you're muted now. Thank you. Next, we have R. Wong. Welcome, R. And then we will move to our speakers requesting to speak virtually.
Hi, I'm Ray Wong, living in Cupertino. And I was really touched. I wasn't going to come up and speak earlier, but I was touched by all these residents here who are finally realizing what's happening with what's going on. And I think it's really important, and this is a message for everyone watching out there, that you should pay attention to what's happening in this city. And it's really important for you to be active, to be engaged, to ask for transparency, to ask for the fact that the city reports to residents, not the other way around. And I think it was really important for everyone to be here, to make their voice heard. And I encourage everyone to continue to come to these meetings to at least be engaged, civil, and at least provide input. I think it's a huge opportunity because if you're asleep at the wheel, lots of things can happen. And so I really encourage you guys to continue to come out. I think it was really important to see that level of engagement and more. There are a lot more issues that are going to be happening here over the next meetings. It's a shame that we have a summer recess. It's a shame that planning commission meetings have been shut down. Commission meetings have not been happening. But I think it's really important for residents to stand up, speak up, and really put some input here. So, and I really want to thank council for actually listening and encouraging folks to actually have some voice because it's been a while since we've had more time to speak in oral communications. Thank you very much.
Thank you, R. And now we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. We have five hands raised. Sashi Begor, Rota Frye, Stephanie, San R., and Kamyaab Mashian. Welcome, Sashi.
Hi, this is Sashi Begor. Thank you, city council, for your opportunity to speak. I'm here today to request you to not turn our neighborhoods into concrete jungles with multi-unit apartment buildings on Schofield or anywhere else in Cupertino. All of us neighbors who have or will be talking on this topic are extremely upset that there will be apartment block built next to single-family homes. We all know that these apartment blocks are not going to be affordable. Regardless, they will bring more traffic with them, especially on Schofield, which is close to Faria. How are the residents going to enter and exit in the morning and evening when the Faria parents also find the drop kids or pick them up? I don't think I need to remind you all that your priority should be to the Cupertino residents' safety and not for the builders' profit. Please do the right thing by the citizens of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Sashi. Next, we have Rota Frye, followed by Stephanie. Welcome, Rota.
Good evening. Thanks, mayor, for extending comment and city attorney for taking Councilmember Moore's excellent suggestion. I'd like to echo the comments made by others pertaining to Schofield. I've seen what the loss of privacy means to residents from our family friends who have owned property in Monterey Park for four generations and are surrounded on all sides by apartments. They lost privacy and light for the vegetable garden upon which they depended. This is wrong on so many fronts, not just for the residents, but also the students who attend Faria, which is a commuter school. It's not a neighborhood school. Please, put a stop to it. And by the way, later tonight on Agenda Seven, you'll be looking at unnecessarily changing our zoning and undermining our quality of life. I'm mad. Furthermore, to echo what Tracy said earlier this evening, I continue to be baffled by the proposed purchase of nineteen four hundred Stevens Creek. I urge council to not purchase this property. We don't need to buy a building for temporary use, lease a building for temporary use. We were told it was turnkey. It isn't. And by the way, if it were a good deal, somebody would have bought it by now. Don't waste our money. We do need to be looking for a sheriff's substation. Stick to the work plan. Don't build that building. Regarding the farmer's market, Mr. Lammy is straight, excuse me, is spot on. We need to have West Coast Farmer's Market as a community amenity. I will tell you unequivocally that the new operator at Dianza will not provide the farmer's market that we've known and loved under the tender care and nurturing of Mr. Lammy. All farmer's markets are not alike. Please, help them find a home in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Rota. Next, we have Stephanie, followed by San R., followed by Kamyaab Mashian. Welcome, Stephanie.
Good evening, city council. I'm here to discuss SB three thirty. My name is Stephanie Yang, and I'm speaking as someone who has grown up on Schofield Drive for close to four decades, someone very familiar with the nature and safety of this neighborhood. When my family and many others of our neighbors moved into these single-family homes near Faria Elementary School, my school, not one individual I've spoken to signed up to live near a multifamily development that inherently will bring significant traffic and density to the area. By moving forth with this plan, city council, you change the character of the neighborhood in a way that nobody signed up for. This development runs the risk of creating parking and traffic issues to a level never experienced before. And we've already heard from others how challenging it is already. As this neighborhood was never intended for this amount of density or multifamily use, to the extent you're willing to change zoning uses and improve multifamily development in a neighborhood zoned as R-one for at least the last forty years in which I've grown up with, respectfully, would you subsequently approve the development of restaurants, retail establishments, strip clubs, pot shops in this area? Where do you draw the line? While we understand the need for affordable housing is important, we believe it should be constructed in zones that are designated for multifamily development. With certainty, if you pass this plan, the neighborhood will engage council and state government resources to fight it at the developer level and city level because we fundamentally believe this is a violation of the spirit of our zoning laws. Thank you for your thoughtful deliberations with this.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next, we have San R., followed by Kamyaab Mashian. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Sheila, councilmembers, and manager Wu. I wish to bring up the topic of the city of Cupertino not clearing homeless encampments. I, along with several others, I, along with several others, have written to you multiple times raising the issue of the new flexibility that you now have following the recent ruling of the U.S. Supreme Court in the matter of City of Grants Pass versus Johnson. Several California cities have taken action following the ruling that occurred on June 28, 2024. And despite writing to you multiple times, as well as the EOC, and in charge of EOC, Tom Chin, not only has no action been taken, but the city has not even given a response on this matter. If Tom Chin and EOC is unwilling to act on this matter, then perhaps the city can do us all a favor and save us some cost and relieve them of their duties. Why do we have an EOC and why do we have a leader for the EOC if they will not do the job they're expected to do? Tom Chin owes us a reply. We pay their salaries. Multiple mails to Tom Chin have resulted in no replies. I wish to bring to your attention specific timelines when your neighbors, other cities right around us, have taken action. And yet, we have done nothing, not even a reply to restaurants. In July of 2024, Santa Clara County has acted. Fremont has acted. On July 5th specifically, Santa Clara County has cleared the Guadalupe River Trail. On July 10th, Fremont has cleared the Alameda Creek Trail. On July 15th, Palo Alto has cleared the Caltrain Station. On July 20th, Sunnywell has cleared Fair Oaks Park and Baylen's Park. On July 25th, Hayward has cleared major transit corridors. Along with these, San Francisco, Oakland, San Diego, and LA have all taken action. Under this council, we have gotten worse than Oakland and worse than LA and worse than San Francisco.
Thank you, San. That is your time. Next, we have our final speaker, Kamyaab Mashian. Welcome.
Good evening, council. I'd like to address the project on Schofields, and so many speakers have been bringing it up. First of all, I did want to point out that I believe this is only an initial application, so I do not think it's a foregone conclusion that this is going to get built. Second, as a lot of speakers have already pointed out, this is, this would be an SB 330 Builders' Remedy Project, which means it really wouldn't be up to the current council to decide whether or not it gets built. It's something that would get built because of the failure of the prior council to meet the city's obligations to build enough housing to make, to confront the housing crisis that we're having in our city and in our state. So if this moves forward, I really think it's important to remember that this, this didn't have to happen. And I'm glad the city council is finally moving forward and planning for our fair share of housing. But the fact that that didn't happen until much later than it should have is the reason we're seeing proposals like this now. And I also would like to take a moment to respectfully address some of the rhetoric that I've heard at this meeting so far. I've heard one speaker contrast apartments with, quote, "homes," suggesting that apartments aren't homes. I've heard a speaker refer to our apartment buildings as monsters. I've heard speakers refer to apartment dwellers as biting insects. And I've heard one speaker strongly imply that apartment dwellers are peeping tongs. This kind of rhetoric treats people, our neighbors, who live in apartments as second-class citizens. I have lived in apartments my whole adult life, and I really do not feel like Cupertino can be a place for me when it's met with this kind of rhetoric. I urge the city council to reject this sort of disrespectful, exclusionary, and classist way of viewing apartment dwellers. Stop treating families who live in apartments as second-class citizens in Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamyaab. Mayor, that was our final speaker for this item.
Okay. Okay, that ends the oral communications section. I see Vice Mayor Fruen's light on. Do you want to say something, Vice Mayor?
Yes, if I could just have asked the city manager if perhaps staff could generate a memo describing the Schofield SB 330 application and exactly what it is and what it isn't, because there appears to be a great deal of confusion about what this is.
Certainly. And we'll have an inform memo out to council in the next two weeks.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to all of you who spoke, and thank you to the folks who showed up on Zoom. Every comment is heard by us. Every comment is taken to heart. And you will get some information promptly from the city. So at least we'll know where we stand on the Schofield Drive issue. Councilmember Chow, you wanted to say something?
So there was a request for an agenda item to consider Farmer's Market at Torrey as community amenity for Cupertino. So I would like to make that agenda request, because I do think it requires some action of the council.
Okay. I just wanted to point out there is an informational memo about the Farmer's Market. Are you confirming that, City Manager?
Yes, that inform memo was sent out to council about two weeks ago. We circulated it to Councilmember Chow.
Is there an update after that?
No, there hasn't.
Or is that, there isn't? So there is all the information that we need in the informational memo, Councilmember Chow?
No, not information. I think there is a request for action by the council to consider allowing Farmer's Market at the Torrey Avenue to, as a community amenity for Cupertino.
Okay. That choice was also included in the informational memo.
That requires an action of the council to make decision.
So, Mayor, I think the correct question would be whether there's a second for that request for a future agenda item regarding that subject.
Okay, should we do that now?
You can do it now.
The reason I shake my head is because there's also a portion reserved on the agenda towards the end.
It has been customary for the council to respond to public requests for agenda.
Yeah, no, this is, so I think, especially since we're talking about it, this, I think this would be an appropriate time to make that request if two council members wish to do so.
Okay, so Councilmember Chow, what is your motion?
It's not, excuse me, Mayor. It's simply a request for a future agenda item.
Oh, okay. So that is what it is, Councilmember Chow? It is a request for a future agenda item, right? Okay, we need a second.
Councilmember Chow, will you repeat the request?
Consider Farmer's Market on Sunday at Torrey Avenue as a community amenity for Cupertino.
Okay, I'll accept your motion. But, you know, I really would like to consider if there were other locations within the city and if it would also need to be on Sunday as well.
Okay, we can explore options and costs. I think until we look into that, we don't really know.
Clarification. Clarification. So that information is in the informational memo?
Right. So just a reminder that this is not on the agenda. So to the extent we're getting beyond just a request, to the extent we're sort of debating the subject, that would not be proper.
Let us not debate the issue, but just let's, your motion was for, or your action, your request was for?
Consider Farmer's Market, your future agenda to consider Farmer's Market as community amenity for Cupertino in either Torrey Avenue or other.
Okay, we will look at all the options that are available. Your second digit?
Yes.
Okay, so it goes on the, on the future agenda item TBD, future agenda. Okay, so any other, Councilmember Wei?
Mayor, just to clarify, the public will also get the Schofield memo, right? It will be published on our website?
Yes.
Yeah.
And will that go on the website, Madam City Manager?
Yes, it will be available on the website.
Just watch for the Schofield memo.
Could we, about how long would it take?
Excuse me, Councilmember?
Sorry. Can we ask about how, what's the timeframe?
It'll be published in two weeks.
Oh, thank you. Awesome.
Okay, so for members of the public who had concerns about the Schofield Drive project, you will get some information and updated information in the next two weeks. Please keep checking the website. And after two weeks, you're not seeing anything. Get in touch with one of us, and we'll direct you to the right spot. Okay, and Councilmember Moore, you had the final comment on the oral communications.
Yes, I have a question for the city attorney, just a procedural question regarding texting on the dais. Do we have any rules about that?
I do not believe we do. I know there are some, there are some city councils where there are rules about texting on the dais. To my knowledge, we do not have any such rules. Obviously, if there were texting among a quorum of council members, that would create an issue under the Brown Act.
And you could end up with an issue if you had a spoken wheel situation as well.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so that ends our oral communications. Thank you for, to all those people who participated. We will move on with the agenda. And the next section is the consent calendar. And I know a couple of items are being pulled, right, Madam City Manager?
Yes. Item number one is pulled by Councilmember Chow, and item number seven was pulled by Councilmember Moore.
Okay, so we will hear these two items after the action calendar. Okay, and any comments, any public comments on the consent calendar?
Just to clarify this, and this is the items remaining on the consent calendar. So that would be two through six, and eight and nine.
That's correct. Comments on consent calendars, item number two through six, eight and nine.
And Mayor, I see no requests virtually or in Community Hall for the remaining items.
Okay, is there, is there a change? Is there a motion to adopt the consent calendar other than items one and seven? Councilmember Wei, you had your light on?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Now we actually get to the action calendar. All right, so item number 10, which is the waiver of the below-market-rate housing mitigation fees, also known as the BMR fees, and zoning, planning municipal code fees, also known as planning fees, imposed on Valco, known as the RISE, SB 35 Project 10101-10330 North Wolf Road. A staff report, please, Madam City Manager. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. I appreciate having the opportunity to present these items to you today. I'd like to begin the presentation by acknowledging that there have been strong differences of opinion about this project over the many years that it's been, the community has been involved with this project. And, you know, the size and importance of this project really implicates questions about the values of the community and how the community sees its future. And so these are entirely proper subjects for political debate in a forum like this. And so, you know, some of the intensity that people have regarding the project is understandable. I think what I've also, and this is just a personal observation of mine, that as time has passed, and we've continued to have this large vacant site in the center of our city, it's been increasingly clear that really nobody wants the status quo. You know, and for that reason, you know, it was important for Pamela and me to advise the city council on a strategy that would allow us to move forward in a way that would, you know, accommodate the project but also protect the community interest. And what we have here is a project that's been improved that, you know, despite concerns that many people have expressed, you know, promises to build needed housing in the community, including 890 units of affordable housing, you know, which is very difficult to accomplish in any other way in a community like this, along with retail and office space. So, you know, I believe the settlement agreement that's in your agenda packet tonight, that council authorized in a closed session last month, really does meet those goals of allowing the project to move forward and protecting the interest of the community. And although the settlement itself is not agendized for action tonight, I would like to provide just an overview of the agreement for council and the members of the community present. And just some high-level description of the benefits that the agreement provides to the community. And that includes, you know, $10.3 million in transportation impact fees, $32 million in other benefit payments provided by the developer, a $0.5 million contribution to long-range planning efforts in the Stevens Creek Corridor or the Valco area, and approximately 9.6 acres of public parkland and other open space. Significantly, the agreement also removes the risk of costly, uncertain litigation that the city could face in what really has become an increasingly unfriendly legal environment for cities litigating in this context. I do want to stress for the members of the public that are listening that the council vote on this settlement in closed session was unanimous, despite the fact that we do have some council members that have expressed serious reservations about this project. I do want to recognize that it took, you know, courage for the entire council, but particularly a great deal of courage for some of the members that have opposed this project in the past to recognize that this settlement is in the best interest of the city and to take a vote to approve the settlement. And I'm really sincerely grateful for the council members that have taken the leap to do that. The specific vote that is agendized for action today is a request for two fee waivers that would effectuate the settlement agreement that do need to be voted on in open session. The first is a waiver of BMR fees, and this is a waiver of non-residential BMR impact fees that is requested based on the provision of 890 onsite affordable units, which do, you know, based on the city's own calculations, offset the impact of the product, project on affordable housing demand. The second is a waiver of long-range planning fees. And as I mentioned earlier, in lieu of those fees, there would be a provision towards Stevens Creek Corridor and Valco area planning efforts. As the staff report discusses, the U.S. Supreme Court has recently clarified that legislatively adopted impact fees, such as those at issue here, must have an essential nexus and a rough proportionality to the development's impact to avoid a finding of an unconstitutional taking of property. Based on this legal standard, it's my opinion that the imposition of the BMR in planning fees, as described in our fee schedules, would likely result in a successful constitutional challenge. I have seen some desire to focus on the amount of the fees that are proposed to be waived. I think that would be an understandable concern if there were more certainty that these fees could actually be collected. I think, unfortunately, that there are significant constitutional constraints that prevent the imposition of the fees. So while, you know, certainly, you know, you could do the math and add up to a large number, you know, that that math doesn't necessarily reflect the fiscal reality that's facing the city. The settlement agreement that is in your agenda packet was negotiated in the context of these legal constraints. But at the same time, I do believe the agreement preserves important benefits to the city. It eliminates the risk of litigation over impact fees, and it will facilitate the project moving forward towards construction. I think this is a fair deal that reflects both of the parties' interests. I think that's why the council approved the negotiation of the agreement in closed session, and that is why you are being asked to vote on the fee waivers before you tonight. The recommended action is to adopt Resolution Number 24007, waiving BMR planning fees for the Valco-RISE project. And for the reasons that I've stated, I do strongly urge you to adopt the recommended action and approve the resolution. Thank you again, and I will attempt to answer any questions you have about the item.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Council can direct questions to the city attorney about the report he presented. We will each get five minutes. Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Madam Mulholland, the City Attorney of Jensen. I think there is a lot of public input saying that the BMR fee, this is a job imbalance, that you have more jobs created by the, by the office space that's being proposed. However, if we, I remember the calculations that the city did is if Valco stayed a 1.2 million square footage of retail space, that job imbalance is even greater. I mean, there's no housing. So is that calculated into the consideration of job and, you know, housing balance?
So, yes, my conclusions regarding the BMR fee are based on the city's own Nexus study. And so that takes into account both the impact of the project but also the net impact relative to the retail that the project is replacing. So that is the way the calculation works.
So, yeah. Thank you. I think the public needs to know that there is another calculation. If we keep the 1.2 million retail, that's going to bring a lot more jobs too into the city. So you don't just count the upcoming office space. You also count, the Nexus study also counts what's originally being replaced.
So the impact fee is based particularly on the generation of demand for lower-income housing? And because retail tends to generate lower-income jobs than other types of land use, that it has a particularly heavy burden on the generation of lower-income housing? So that does, that does create a significant credit for the projects when you look at the net impact that it would have on the demand for affordable housing?
Thank you. So I want to pay attention to the net impact of this project. And I think that's very important to keep in mind. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fruen?
Hoping you could elaborate a little bit on the increasingly difficult legal space that impact fees inhabit, because there's quite a significant number of pieces of state legislation that are all turtling their way through Sacramento that could potentially make it much more difficult for us to collect these fees or to do so in a timely fashion. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, I mean, I probably won't be able to catalog all of the legislation that could possibly impact our ability to collect the fees. I mean, I think just as far as legal environment, obviously, the Sheets case, decided by the Supreme Court earlier this year, is a major change in how cities are going to have to approach these types of fees. You know, the court's decision is, was not, didn't really come as a surprise to the city attorney's office. to the City Attorney's Office, you know, even dating back to before I was the City Attorney here. It was something that, I think, was a concern. You know, but the law is clearly going in that direction at the federal level. On the state level, you know, you're seeing various things that limit the ability of the city to collect fees, that restrict the city's discretion for the timing of collecting fees. And so, you know, it would be difficult to predict how those changes would play out over the lifetime of this project, which is, you know, very likely a decade or more. But the last two decades of experience would suggest that they will continue to ratchet in the direction of less local discretion over fees. One significant benefit of this agreement is a lot of the benefits to the city are locked in, they're negotiated and agreed with, with the developer, and, you know, they wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily be affected by that future legislation. And so, I think I was mindful, and I think the Council was also mindful in deciding to authorize entering into the settlement agreement of those changes. And I think it should inform how we're looking at the value of the settlement and, you know, really, the overall protection to the city that the settlement agreement provides.
So, in short, would it be fair to say, then, that there's added benefit to the clarity in when we would be receiving fees under this agreement?
There is certainty for both sides under this agreement, and that is a major benefit that benefits both parties. And that, I mean, that kind of shared benefit is the reason why you could move forward with a settlement and why we were able to find common ground. I mean, there are other things that are obvious benefits, like not having the expense and time and burden of litigation. But it's those areas of shared benefit that, I think, really enabled us to find a common ground that made sense for both parties to enter into this settlement agreement.
Got it. And then, under this particular circumstance, because as you described it, we, if attempting to try to continue to, you know, ask for the full range of fees that were previously demanded, if we were to lose in court, we would be having to pay the litigation costs and attorney's fees of the developer, yes?
Yeah, I mean, under the most likely causes of action, there would be a right, we would obviously be liable for our own attorney's fees, and there would be a strong chance that we would be liable for the developer's attorney's fees as well.
Section 1983 type of action?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Mr. City Attorney, a follow-up to the Vice Mayor's question. We have already incurred attorney costs, legal costs, to date. Do we have some idea of how much that is and how?
I don't have, I don't have an estimate of that right now. I'd say that these recent negotiations, you've incurred the cost of my salary and time, but you're stuck paying for that, at least until you fire me. You know, so, but certainly in the past, at different times, we have incurred outside Council costs for this matter. I don't, I don't have an estimate for that for you right now. I could certainly follow up with it.
Okay, fair enough. Councilmember Chow.
So, I asked this in the supplemental report. Just want to confirm that we have the second amendment of the project. And then, the reanswer you were given is if there is a third or fourth amendment, this agreement will still maintain, you said, as long as the SB 35 entitlement is still in place. Because every amendment, they change the amount of office, retail, and housing.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the term of the agreement is 20 years or until the expiration of the current SB 35 entitlement. That does not prevent, as you point out, the applicant from submitting an additional modification application that's under that entitlement. There are constraints in SB 35 that, you know, that limit what can be modified, right? But, but, yes, that within those constraints, this agreement would continue to apply.
That seems concerning. And then, you confirmed that if they, I think they plan to sell some parts of the property, and then, so the agreement will sustain to subsequent property owners.
Yeah, and, and, yes, and the agreement is in the process of being recorded and is binding on successor property owners.
And you mentioned that the 2015 Nexus study could show the project fully mitigate the demand for affordable housing. That's only affordable housing only because it was the retail in the original shopping mall usually would contribute more for affordable. But then, you didn't make any statement on our total job housing balance in terms of market rate.
I did not, yes.
Because we do have 2 million square feet of office space that will exacerbate our job housing balance, which is already bad. It might make it worse.
Yes, that's, yes, correct. I did not do that analysis because the BMR fee is intended to mitigate the impact on lower-income housing.
Yeah, so I want to clarify, what's mitigated is only BMR housing, and only because the analysis usually say shopping mall needs more lower-income workers. Then, I'll reserve the rest of my time.
Okay. Vice, Councilmember Moore?
Thank you.
Five minutes, please.
So I think this is a question for the attorney also. So with regards to the BMR mitigations, if I'm understanding it correctly, are you, are you saying that the amount of housing provided on the site mitigates the impact of the 1.95 million square feet of office or not? I wasn't really clear on that.
Yes.
It does.
It mitigates the impact of the 1.9 million square feet office and the provision of lower-income housing. That was the provision, that was, I think, the point that Councilmember Chow was making, is that market rate housing does not figure into that calculation.
Right, okay. So I want that to be really clear, because when you look at the plans and you see there's 6,050 office parking spaces on this project, that they are anticipating a huge number of commuters into, into that location, and that they don't live there. They're expecting that that's not mitigating the office component fully, just a portion of it. Okay, I understand that. What happens if, with regards to, and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this under this agenda item, but if there are updates to the building code moving forward? Because I think we're kind of trapped in time back in 2018. What happens?
Yes, so I can answer, I can answer that question, although, I mean, it's, this is not really agendized for action this evening, but I think it would be appropriate to answer the question for context. Is, so there are provisions in SB 35 that allow the developer to sort of lock in the building codes, building standards that are, that were in place at the time that the entitlement was applied for or received. I forget whether it's applied for or received, off the top of my head. You know, that said, there are ongoing discussions with the developer about sort of how to apply that and sort of how we can move forward, given the fact that, you know, it's now 2024.
And how many years is this approval good for?
So the approval, that's a complicated question. There are numerous triggers that extend or extinguish the approval under SB 35. So, I mean, that's not, that's not a question I can give a simple answer to here.
Okay, so we're at least under six years of past since the code that this was approved under, or maybe it was 2016?
So what I can say definitively is this project was approved in September 2018, and there's still a valid entitlement.
Okay, okay. So it's been a few years for the building code, and things have progressed, including our Bird Safe Dark Skies ordinance was added in. Oh, and I do have a question about selling off parts of the property. I had, I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Is there an intention to sell off the housing components or office components? Or what news do you have?
So I don't know, no, certainly don't know all of the details of the developer's plan for development. I do know that they are exploring different development partners for, you know, both the market rate and affordable components of the property. I certainly don't know all those plans. I'm not sure the developer knows all those plans at this point.
That's okay.
But, but, yeah, that, the agreement is designed to accommodate that and protect the city's interest in the event that that does happen.
Okay, and one more regarding the union that wrote in. Do we still, has SB 35 been altered to lose the labor requirement?
This project remains subject to prevailing wage requirements. You know, so that will be an implementation issue that the city will need to address with the developer.
And we, how do we follow that? How do we make sure that that's being implemented?
That is, that is, that is something that we will need to address as part of, and we certainly, it's something that certainly is on the radar of the management that's looking at this, but it's something that we will need to address as a city because we don't really deal with prevailing wage, we don't have a staff person that does prevailing wage issues. So that's something that, so that's something that we will have to figure out. It's a very good question.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, sorry. We can always come back, or we will?
I...
I think you're out of time.
No, I have two and a half minutes.
Do you want to do it now? Do you want to come back?
Yeah, I want to do it now.
Okay, go ahead. Two minutes, Councilmember Chow.
I believe two and a half minutes, anyway.
Okay.
So, so the traffic impact fee on your slide is $10 million. So what, if we didn't receive this legal challenge, what would have been the traffic impact fee paid by this project, according to our 2015 Nexus study?
So that's not necessarily a straightforward way to answer. There are several different ways we could calculate the traffic impact fee under our...
Do you have a round ballpark?
Well, so there's certainly one way that we could calculate the fee where it would be, you know, much higher, you know, in the, you know, the $30 million-plus range. There's another way we could calculate the fee under our existing policies, and that is consistent with the settlement and consistent with the review conducted by our Transportation Division of the settlement. That is, you know, the same amount that, in the same amount as in this settlement.
Yeah, that's fine. So the planning fee that's waived would be about $10 million.
Roughly, yes.
Planning fee means, does that mean the plan check fee, the meeting, would they still be paying the, because I think those fees are actual cost incurred by the city by city staff spending time on the project. Are those waived?
No, so, yeah, so the planning fee that is being requested to be waived, that isn't specifically intended to cover long-range planning costs, so like the development of general and specific plans. The settlement agreement actually provides, you know, that a release with some limitations if we were to increase the fees excessively, a release against challenges to other types of fees, so like the plan check fee.
I remember the city had to hire a project manager just for this project. Is that fee still covered by the developer?
So that's a, that is a, that's a separate issue that will be addressed outside of this agreement. We have, I can say we have generally had cooperation from the developer in covering those costs.
Great, that's good to know. Thank you. I'm out of time, so I'm going to try to cut you off.
Sure.
Okay, Vice Mayor Frue.
So I'll, the, this...
I think you have five minutes?
No, I have about a minute and 20 seconds, something like that.
Okay.
With respect to the planning fee and the agreement that we've come to here, that one of the things that the money could be used on is planning efforts surrounding the Stevens Creek Corridor. Would that include the Stevens Creek Corridor Vision Study?
I think, I think it could, yeah. I think, I think, you know, it's, it's intended to be interpreted broadly. It's not an impact fee in the AB 1600 sense.
Got it, okay, so if...
I mean, it also certainly include sort of a Heart of the City specific plan update if the, if the city were inclined to go to, if the City Council were inclined to include that as part of, say, its work program next year.
Got it, perfect.
Thank you so much.
One of the terms is the dedication of public parkland and private open space, about close to 10 acres, which I think has been identified. Is there a specific space that's been identified? Or is this something that'll be resolved later?
It is. If you give me a second, I can point you to the page in your agenda packet where it's identified. You have to bear with me while I scroll, though. So I'm looking at page 824 in your agenda packet.
All right. Okay. All right, that answers my question. That ends our comments for now. And public comments, please, on this item.
Yes, Mayor, I currently have eight requests to speak, nine requests to speak on this item?
Nine?
Yes, now nine. 27 minutes?
Okay, yes, please. Three minutes per person.
Okay, so we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Jean Bedore, followed by Reed Mulz.
Good evening, City Council. Valco, Valco, the rise. Where do I begin? Where do I end? Anyway, this project used to have a lot of retail, and the hopes were that we would have had construction there now, but we haven't. El Paso has gone down. I just shop in Santa Cruz because there's nothing left anymore. But in that case, since the City Council has proposed to try to engage the owner, I just had a couple of comments. One of them is, let's talk about selling off the property. When Main Street was being managed by previous City Council, they made sure that the developer delivered on certain parts of the property so that the whole unit was delivered eventually. That is why we have an entire intact Main Street. There were provisions put in that there would be money held if they did not provide building under a timely management. I would hope that we had something like this for the huge chunk of land at Valco, but I don't know, I don't know. That ship seems to have been sailing, and I have great concerns. We have, evidently, they have promised 10 acres of parkland. I don't, you guys were talking about, I don't know what, I don't know where that parkland is. I would like to know where it is. I'd like it to be along Stevens Creek Boulevard. If you were not aware, there is going to be teacher housing and supportive housing in the back of the property. You might want to have that parkland adjacent to those people. I hope that we have more than 10 acres. We were promised years ago that we would have parkland there. And I don't think 10 acres is good enough. They can do more. Fee waivers, long-range planning fees. I don't like to see cities get short-shifted by overeager developers. We have had a lot of new laws that have come in from the state level, which are debatable. I've never been able to vote on them. Nobody cares what my opinion is, but I think they basically are really awful. So we have SB 35, which runs until 2029. Then we have 423, which just became effective. And I understand that Ash Colra has a brand-new bill that was just gut and amended in the Senate, which is going to do something and make the BMR 10% instead of 20%. I hope that this, that this project stays with SB 35. I'm scared that in January of next year, we'll suddenly have the developer say, "Hey, I get to go by 423 and Ash Colra's new one." Thank you.
Next, we have Jean Bedore, followed by Reed Mulz, followed by Claudia Bono. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, Councilmembers and staff. I had sent in an email yesterday expressing my support for this. First of all, I really appreciate the city attorney's explanation of the thought processes that went into developing this agreement. I totally commend both he and the city manager for their thoughtfulness in approaching this very intractable issue. I commend the Council for your unanimous decision in closed session. I commend the council for your unanimous decision in closed session to move forward with what I consider to be a win-win agreement between the city and Valco property owner. You know, they could have, they could have continued their lawsuit. And guess what? The city would not have gotten anything. Plus, they would have had to pay probably substantial legal fees. So what this does is this, as the city attorney said, it provides certainty. Both sides end up winning and we can move ahead. Because, you know what? It's been 10 years. I've been here for most of it. You know, and I think it's time for us to move ahead. I urge you to reaffirm your commitment to the community by unanimously approving these fee waivers, thereby ensuring that we make progress forward with this badly needed project. It's been an eyesore for much too long. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next we have Reed Molds, followed by Claudio Bono, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Reed.
Thank you very much. My name is Reed Molds. I'm managing director with Sand Hill Property Company and project executive for the Rise, formerly Valco. As you all know, the Rise is a mixed-use town center-style project that will soon become Cupertino's vibrant social heart. It will include world-class shopping and dining, homes for lifestyle, all lifestyles and life stages, attractive workplaces, and an abundance of immersive outdoor spaces for this community to gather. I'm here tonight to express my gratitude, not only to the community members who've been waiting patiently for this project to be built, but to the city attorney, city manager, city staff, and this council for their manner in conducting the negotiation of this settlement agreement and for reaching a conclusion that feels like a true compromise. Not to get into the details, but I just wanted to be understood that a central pillar of this agreement was to recognize the elements of the project that meet and exceed the policy goals of the city. For example, affordable housing it is providing in the actual public parkland it's, it'll be dedicating. The city is not only collecting tens of millions of dollars in in-lu fee payments, but receiving tens of millions more in terms of the very real in-kind contributions made directly by the project itself. These fee waivers in front of the council tonight have a lot to do with the fact that the city is collecting in other ways. In general, it's a very thoughtful agreement, fair, and well put together by both sides. And for what it's worth, I know it'll protect the city while still providing necessary flexibility as this multi-phase master plan is implemented over the next decade. If the project changes, the fees will adjust. What I think I'm most proud of is the fact that we were able to work together on this. That collaboration now allows us to focus on the greater challenges immediately in front of us, moving this ambitious program forward under very difficult market conditions. This agreement, and more importantly, the collaboration that went into it, will serve as a launchpad as we navigate the challenges that lay ahead. No matter what comes up, for better, for worse, I and my team at Sand Hill will always look to work through it with you guys and do our best to be a committed and earnest partner to the city and to the community as we implement our plans. In terms of what's immediately in front of us, we have construction commencing soon. We'll be doing some light site preparation work involving utility relocations starting in early August. Should take a month or two to finish that. And then we'll get into the larger operation of grading and site infrastructure improvements, which will be a much longer process, 18 months, give or take. Our start date on the infrastructure work is a bit dependent on PG&E, but I think commencement should be September, October. Thing of the first phase is us laying the groundwork for the Rise so that as soon as the market pivots, we'll be ready to go vertical with the buildings that best respond to the conditions at that time. Our hope is the timing will be good and this long-anticipated project can finally take shape. I'm looking forward to continuing this journey together. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. Next we have Claudio Bono, followed by Luis Sedadi. Welcome, Claudio.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruen, council members, city manager Wu, city attorney, city staff, madam clerk. Claudio Bono here, Cupertino resident, and tonight I'm just speaking on my behalf. First and foremost, I just want to shadow, give you a little statement of what happened last week. We all looked at our emails and the reporting that we got from newspapers and we were all smiling. Finally, something is going through and finally, everybody on the dice agrees together. I wish it would happen more often. So it's been a long time coming, but here we are, 2024. I'm here to express my support. This will definitely enhance the quality of life of the Cupertino resident and provide amenities that we need here in Cupertino so that we don't have to put the money outside Cupertino to have some fun. So offers countless opportunities and as stated by city attorney, offers a great net impact. We need this. We want this. Happy to move forward with this. And like I said, it's been years in coming, so please adopt resolution number 24-077, waiving BMR and planning fees imposed to the Valco Rise SB 35 project. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. Next we have Luis Sedadi. And then we will move to our individuals requesting to speak virtually. Welcome, Luis.
Hello, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruen, and city council and city staff. As detailed in the staff report, the provision of affordable housing units fully mitigates the impact of the project's market rate housing and non-residential components. By improving this fee regime, you are ensuring that the city can collect substantial fees to support essential services and avoid future legal challenges. These fees alone will really help to close our city's unprecedented deficit in light of the CDTFA's recent rule change. This vote is more than a financial decision. It's a statement of unity and progress. Your unanimous support from the city council will send a powerful message that Cupertino is finally ready to heal from the past 10 years, years of division and work together for the common good. This project will bring vibrancy to the empty lot that has long symbolized in action for 10 years. It will provide a central place for our community to live, work, and play. We believe this is the rare opportunity to show brave leadership and move forward with a project that aligns with our shared values and needs. Let's not feed the fear of the last 10 years. Instead, let's embrace the potential for positive change. Instead of an empty lot for another 10 years, let's vote for this to let the project proceed. We know we all need to do this. We need to do this. Your unanimous support will help transform Cupertino into a more inclusive and dynamic community instead of a community that's asking, what's going on with that empty lot? It's been empty for a really long time. So 10 years is enough. Let's move forward. Let's not niner-nanner and, you know, go on with this detail and that detail and then re-bring things that have already been rehashed to rehash it again to niner-nanner. We've had 10 years of this. We need to vote yes and move swiftly without regurgitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. And now we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. We have Sandana Siva, Philip Nguyen, Shivani Kabuluru, Kabuluru. Welcome, Sandana.
Hi, city council. My name is Sandana Siva. I'm a rising freshman at San Jose State University, hoping to study city planning and environmental science. And I've been a Cupertino resident for the past 10 years in the Rancho Renconada neighborhood. I feel like the Cupertino city council should approve this current fee waiver to alleviate the deficit that our city council has. And it can provide, like more, like what the presentation said, like more transportation impact fees and more park fees and more like open space for the people living in the city. And additionally, like the project itself provides 890 affordable housing units, showing that, like, we don't really need more below-market rate fees to be pursued by the council. And additionally, pursuing more fees would be really hard because like we will entangle ourselves in more legal challenges. And we could possibly be in a larger deficit if we keep asking more from the developers. And this project also provides a lot of mixed-use opportunities, which is like really exciting for young people like me who are very much into urbanism and enjoy lively areas. And additionally, our, our generation, especially my generation, is the seeds of the future. And having these more affordable housing opportunities provided by the Rise project is really important for us so we have a chance to live in this beautiful city of Cupertino. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandana. Next we have Philip Nguyen, followed by Shivani Kabuluru, followed by Glenn Fishler. Welcome, Philip.
Hello, this is Philip. Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members and city staff. This, this project, this Valco project is the largest housing, housing project in Cupertino history, with by far the most affordable homes. We can't allow Valco to be a crater for any longer. This is an absolute cornerstone project for us, being able to meet the needs of our diverse community and fulfilling our housing element. We must do everything we can to move this project forward to ensure we open our doors to families of all incomes and teachers, young professionals. This is economically very, very sound, as well as climate resiliently sound. This is a crucial step towards vertical construction to finally take action on our housing. And after years of snail, snail's pace progress, this is a very, very good project. So please, please, we need unanimous support in supporting this project. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Shivani Kabuluru, followed by Glenn Fishler, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Shivani.
Thank you. Good evening, Cupertino city council staff and my fellow Cupertino residents. I grew up in Cupertino, went to Collins Elementary, was going to go to Lawson. And I grew up very close to Valco. And a lot of my childhood revolved around walking to Valco Mall and building memories there. So it saddens me that for so long, Valco just became this desolate, empty parking wasteland when I saw this magical potential for it to be a hub for people like me who grew up maybe going to the AMC movie theater, maybe having a date by the Benihana there or going shopping at Macy's or Sears. With the new promise of the plans that we voted on so far in Valco, I was saddened to see that it took a decade to come to where we are today. The decision before the city council right now is simple. It's merely to honor the powerful and unanimous decision that you've already arrived at in your own closed-door meeting. And it's also one to know when a good deal is in front of you and to not walk away from it. You all made this deal and voted in favor of it because it's economically sound, because it's environmentally sound, and frankly, because you want to avoid putting our city into more problems, more debates, more arguments, more stalling by not doing that. You all recognize that there is a good deal in front of you, one that takes in all parties, all voices, and all accounts. So the smart thing to do is to continue to follow your wisdom as a united city council and move forward in what's already been a decade-long debate. I still remember in 2009 when I was finally asked to go to the movie theaters. And I was so excited because Valco had been such a mainstay for me. And I would like to be excited, to be able to live in an apartment, an apartment that used to be where Valco Shopping Mall is, and create new memories and add the Cupertino that I know can be created with votes like this today. I urge the council to merely follow the precedent that they've set, to honor the unanimous vote that they've taken, and to honor folks like me who've lived in Cupertino, believe in its potential, and want to see a brighter tomorrow. Thank you. Please vote.
Thank you, Shivani. Next we have Glenn Fishler, followed by Rota Frye, followed by Kamya Abmashin. Welcome, Glenn.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruen, city council members, city manager Wu, and city staff. My name's Glenn Fishler and I'm a longtime Cupertino resident. The old Valco site project is the primary reason I have become politically activated in Cupertino. I want my city representatives to work with the developers to get the project completed ASAP. In that vein, I'm encouraged the city has successfully negotiated a fee waiver agreement with the developers of the old Valco site. Negotiations are rarely easy and almost never create perfect outcomes for either party. But this one is clearly a win-win. The city receives almost $43 million in project-related fees and benefits, receives almost 10 acres of parks and open space, avoids a likely expensive legal dispute that would probably, it would probably lose, and most importantly, it clears the way for the developer to begin the project post haste. Well done. I urge you all to continue to show your support for this important project and vote unanimously to approve the fee waivers in the staff's draft resolution. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Glenn. Next we have Rota Frye, followed by Kamya Abmashin, followed by Lisa. Welcome, Rota.
Good evening. For years, we had been hearing 125 million in fees, fees based on the NEXIS. It's a hard pill to swallow to reconcile that nearly two-thirds of it has vanished. But I'm flexible and I appreciate the city's collaboration with the Valco owners. I'm also glad to see the prevailing wages for the builders. That gives us a better chance that buildings will be built by skilled and trained artisans. There had been some legislation that removed that requirement and I'm glad that the Valco project is stepping up. Now that I know that Mr. Molds is in the audience, I would ask that the project make it possible for these artisans to be able to live there with safe and adequate parking for a truck and tools. Please, let's get that BMR housing built. And you already heard tonight, and I'll repeat it. Please, 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 let's go for current building codes at each phase of the project. We're already three revisions behind. Going down rev is really tough on a building department as well. I know your staff will tell you that. But also you heard from Lisa early tonight. One is bird safety in dark skies really important for residents. There are also other code enforcements that prevent catastrophic deck failures like we had in Berkeley years ago. They actually, over two revisions, improved the codes on that one. There's been major improvements on indoor-out air quality, which will make the buildings healthier for its inhabitants, less spread of COVID. And frankly, you can really tell when a building has superior indoor air quality. There's more fire-safe building assemblies in the new, new building codes from the one that they're using, and sequestration of elements in elevator shafts and more. Better buildings rent and more current buildings rent for more money and sell for more money. Please, go with the current building codes at every phase of this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Rota. Next we have Kamya Abmashin, followed by Lisa, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Kamya.
Good evening again, council. I was impressed to hear that the, the settlement was agreed to unanimously. And I hope that you can take that same unity forward in approving this next step and making sure that that settlement can be maintained and this project can finally get built. We heard a lot of people earlier talking about how they support more housing density, how they support affordable housing when it is planned for in a smart way. This is exactly the kind of development that makes that possible. Let's, let's really live up to that and keep moving forward with this. Thank you. keep moving forward with this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kamyaab. Next, we have Lisa, followed by Gori Chala, followed by Dinesh Tekmansky. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So, as Rhoda mentioned, I'm really hoping that bird safe in dark sky will be something that Sand Hill Valco property owner is willing to step up to. And if not, it's really kind of a contradictory thing, given Peter Powell's affection for birds. And what about affection for residents and the environment? So I really hope that does happen. I wholeheartedly agree that current building codes should be used. You know, you sit on a project for long enough. I'm not even going to go into that. But after hearing what Reed had to say this evening, I got a little nervous about some things. Many of you may remember Sunnyvale Town Center was the same developer that sat half-done for years and years and years, and all the legal stuff with that. And I think the city going in unprotected by making sure that this BMR housing is built, and it's, as it stands right now, it appears to me it's not really truly BMR, as the term states. It's not what it was in some of the other iterations. There's less of it in the park land. You know, I want this to work, but I think that you got to go on with eyes open. And the fact that there's some people in the public that knew that this is a unanimous decision in closed session before tonight, when the city attorney reported that out, is very concerning. How are citizens, residents, learning of that prior to that first part of the meeting tonight? Please ask yourselves that. So, good kudos that you guys are agreed initially at this closed-session meeting. Maybe you've thought of other things, or other things have come up since, and you have some more comments to make, and I'd love to hear what they are. I am just asking that you be very aware of the reputation and history, even in Cupertino, of this developer. And I'm sorry I have to say that, but I've been watching it and listening and participating in this kind of thing for decades, and I'm not just making it up. So, I don't really have enough time to finish what I was saying, because I wasn't going to speak at all, but I felt the need after hearing some things. So, thank you very much. Good luck.
Thank you, Lisa. And, Dinesh, it looked like you fell off. You lowered your hand and you raised it again, so I will, it was before the cutoff, and I will allow you to talk now. Welcome.
Yeah, sorry, my computer died. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dinesh Tekmansky. I'm a 32-year resident. First, I'd really like to thank our city attorney Jensen for explaining, first, his clear and concise explanation of why we're foregoing such huge fees from the RISE project. Although this saddens and concerns me for how we'll cover and pay for future infrastructure and increased RENA numbers due to the further exacerbation between, you know, our housing and jobs imbalance created by this project. It's huge. It's huge. That's what got us here in the first place. That's what I've never been able to wrap my head around on this project. We're desperate for housing, yet we're creating the need for more. I don't quite get that. Anyhow, I do understand that without a nexus study and inferior litigation and future housing bill amendments, that, you know, we truly are between a rock and a hard place. And, you know, I know you guys are doing the best that you can. So, thank you for that. Eventually, you know, I think we're going to have to pay the HCD piper down the road for all of that office. This has always been my concern on that project. And I really fear that those costs for more housing and mitigation are going to be borne by our residents. I'm really glad to hear that Mr. Molds feels that this whole RISE settlement was done with such willingness and collaboration. I kind of don't feel without a choice. And I also really do look forward to seeing the world-class shopping that you promised us at the RISE. So, thank you. Thanks all for your hard work. I'm glad we will get the housing. Good night.
Thank you, Dinesh. Next, we have San Ar, followed by Gori Chala. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Sheila and council members and Manager Wu and Attorney Jensen. I'd like to ask the city to consider what actions you're taking to initiate a study of the fee mitigation that will follow the sheet's ruling. It appears that a number of other cities have acted immediately to take action on this, and there is a concern that once this settlement goes ahead, that other developers in the city will approach the city with similar action. And I know it was mentioned in the supplemental report that that will not be a concern, given the uniqueness of this project. However, it is hard, given the ruling, to concede on one and not on the others. And so, I do wish to ask that, as a part of your actions today while you're going ahead with this, and I think it is important to go ahead with this, I think Sand Hill is a developer that has a lot of emotion in the city. However, I have to say that I enjoy the property at Main Street almost every weekend. I'm very appreciative of what we have at Main Street, and I'm looking forward to more of that. So I am actually a supporter of Main Street, and I would like to see more retail in the city. Having said that, I do think as a part of these actions, you should prioritize for future agenda at short notice and impact assessment methodology that the city will initiate, so that we immediately put in place the necessary actions to defend against the sheet's ruling. Specifically, you need to initiate detailed nexus studies so that you're able to justify the fees that you will need to charge on future projects, and you have the necessary backing material to support this. So let me give you a few examples here specifically. San Francisco did initiate a nexus fee guideline, and this was as far back as May. So here we are in July, and as far as I know, we have done nothing here. San Francisco has also taken up a proportionality analysis, and they've developed a framework so that these fees can actually be shown to offset the actual cost for the developer. Same thing with San Jose, as Vice Mayor may know already. San Jose has released guidelines on June 10th, and they have methodology to calculate the traffic and infrastructure studies to justify their fees. And likewise, you have the same actions being taken by Oakland, and similar actions being taken by Palo Alto as well. Palo Alto actually had its first review on April 20th, and thereafter, they passed a resolution to update their fee assessment process, which passed on June 5th. And Palo Alto has now a detailed impact assessment for each type of development that can occur in the city, so that fees are proportional. Fremont has done something as well. I don't see any of this in our city. And I would like to ask all of the council members in your prep sessions and in every meeting with the city manager to follow.
Next, our final speaker is Gori Chala. Welcome, Gori.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Gori Chavla, and I'm here to thank the council for unanimously voting to allow the city attorney to negotiate this great deal that we have in front of us today. As another speaker said, this deal is indeed a win-win. It allows us to actually get something in return with the planning of the Valco property, which is now called the RISE, whereas if we had continued in court, it would not have ended so well. So once again, thank you for unanimously directing the city attorney to negotiate this deal, and I really hope that you will accept the deal that is placed in front of you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Gori. Mayor, that was our final request to speak on this item.
Okay. Thank you so much for all the people who came before us and expressed your concerns and expressed your thoughts on this very important issue. And I'm almost sure that many of you who spoke have spoken about this in years past, so hopefully you won't have to do it again. Let's bring it back to the council. And for a motion, I would like a motion to adopt the resolution, because we all remember that we did vote unanimously for a settlement at the June closed session. And we have had enough time to discuss and vet this issue with all the questions and concerns that we may have. So I'm hoping we can keep it short, bring it, start with a motion, and then try and wrap this up. Is there a motion? Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. I move adopt reservation number 24-077, waiving BMR and planning fees imposed on the Valco-RISE SB 35 project.
Okay. Is there a second? I will second it. Okay. Do we need discussions? Councilmember More, you will get five minutes.
Thank you. So, quick question. Because of the issue with the building code, will our building officials be signing off on structures which aren't built to the current code? Let's say they finished a structure in 2027, would they then be expected to, if the developer hasn't elected to use a more current code, sign off on something from 2018 standards?
That's a possibility, given the way SB 35 is structured. We are discussing, we are in discussions with the developer about, you know, how to incorporate current codes into the project to the extent as possible. There are both substantive and procedural reasons why we would prefer to do that, but they do have the ability to use the older codes under SB 35.
Thank you. And I think that's a problem with the state law, and I do wonder what kind of liability the developer might be facing when he goes to sell at that point in having to disclose that information. So with regards to the impact fees, they were first challenged in December of 2018. There was some effort by the city's attorneys a couple of years ago on these fees. So what happened? Why did this topic come back up again?
So, I mean, without disclosing anything confidential, I mean, I do think that there were, there was a further momentum to initiate these discussions after we received the application for the Second Amendment. And there seemed to be interest from the developer in trying to push forward with the project, and that we would, and really, the time sensitivity is that once building permits and other things start to issue, we need to know what fees we attach to those permits.
Okay, thank you. And with regards to that, I don't really appreciate the blame game that I see here on the council, so I would like that to stop. I do, with regards to this project, I do appreciate the changes to the project. Having worked in land development as a civil engineer, I do ask that you consider demolition of the East property and a restoration of the original natural topographic contours, if you would consider that. It may make for a better project in the end. Having read about the development challenges faced for office and dense development, I wish we were having something more like parts of Santa Clara Square or Rivermark here. They seem to be very vibrant and successful. The developer, which member of the public mentioned, has definitely shown at Main Street that they are more than capable of building human-scale, vibrant, and economically successful spaces. And it is likely unanimous that the community would like that as well, as the public has stated. We know that you can do it, and we hope that moving forward, we get a really good project that everyone's happy about. Thank you.
Councilmember Chow.
A question. So, this SB 35 project is, the state law is meant for the project to not only mitigate the impact of this project. It's meant to provide, if they require two-story residential, 50% of units. It's meant so that we could have more below-market-rate housing to meet the needs of the entire city. But then, I just realized now, it seems the rationale now is the BMR for this project mitigates impact of this project, so it doesn't benefit the city at all? Because we do need a lot of BMR housing in the city, and it's getting all these streamlined waivers, concessions, for the reason of providing more than the project impact.
Yeah, I don't know what the exact number is, but it is a non-zero number that's above the project impact, based on the city's nexus study.
So what is the current percentage of BMR units?
The current percentage is half of the base, which is 33% roughly of the total units.
Not the...
890.
890. And then, if we are waiving the BMR fee, we are waiving $67 million.
If calculated based on our fee schedule.
Based on the fee schedule of this year. So after subsidizing this project with so many other concessions and waivers, we are subsidizing this project again by waiving the fees. I'm trying to rationalize now, because we all know below-market-rate housing really needs to be subsidized. If we are $67 million short in our funding, that means $67 million short of below-market-rate funding for the city. Right?
Right. So I wouldn't characterize it as subsidizing the project. I mean, I would say that you're correct that we are waiving the BMR fee, but the project is providing a significant number of units onsite, 890. And also, I mean, don't forget that there's $32 million in benefit payments that will come in over the life of the project that can be used for a range of purposes, but those include affordable housing. So I think within the legal constraints that we discussed earlier, the project preserves the onsite benefit, and also offers the opportunity to have, you know, additional funds that are available for the development of affordable housing as the project is built.
Yeah, but then the project still doesn't mitigate the likely 6,000 units of demand on housing because of 2 million square feet of office space. Thank you. I'll reserve my time for comment later.
Councilmember Wei.
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. I'm hoping that we're not going back to bickering of, you know, what had happened and what could have happened. And I'm hoping that from now on, Sand Hill Development and Cupertino can work hand-in-hand for the benefit of our residents. Okay, let's not go back to what happened before. Let's look into what could happen in the future. And I really believe this could be a win-win situation if we do it this way, if we continue to criticize each other. And I don't think that builds friendship, that builds goodwill, that builds collaboration. So I'm hoping that going forward, we let go of those, and we let go and make the RISE a prize for Cupertino. So I'm hoping that both developer, our residents, and our council members have that in heart. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fruen, five minutes, please.
Just to quickly point out a couple of comments that we did receive that I think merit some degree of answer. There was one comment that came from the public that seemed to allege that people had foreknowledge somehow of the closed-session vote. And I would simply note that the staff report for this item was published last Wednesday, and it contains that information. So you might want to examine whether you're actually going through all of the materials first. first, before making accusations that I think are really quite problematic and are not consistent with the spirit of what we're supposed to be here doing. I understand that people have a concern about what the potential office impact might be long-range of this project. I will say, from having spoken to representatives from MTC ABAG many times, that simply the jobs impact of sites in the city is not how MTC ABAG generates your arena figures. They exclude a whole range of sites based upon whether or not there have been recent project applications, there are recent development, they do an independent capacity analysis of their own, they don't base it purely on, oh, you created this number of jobs, therefore you have to produce this many homes. That is not how they operate. Beyond that, you know, we do have to get to a point here where there isn't a hole in the ground any longer. And I think it's really important to underscore that unless this project moves forward, that continues to be the case. It also means that we forego everything that the project can bring. Last year, we looked at a whole host of things that might help offset our budget and the shortfall that we see there, and the conservative estimate for what the rise would bring us fully built, with something on the order of $10 million a year. That's a really significant amount of money from one project. So let's take ourselves back up to, you know, the 50,000-foot mark and remember the big picture here. Thank you.
I wanted to thank staff and city attorney, city manager and staff for coming through with this settlement, which is after extraordinary, extraordinarily complex situation with so much uncertainty and confusion still looming. In my meetings with neighboring cities and council members and staff from neighboring cities, there is still so much, no one really knows the answer of, to what is in the future as far as office space is concerned, what is in the future as far as retail is concerned. These concepts are constantly undergoing changes, and the fact that we have arrived at this point is something that we should all feel good about. A settlement means that neither side gets everything it wants, but it also means that each side gets enough to enable it to move forward. In this case, we have a solid, we have a realistic plan for the future. And I think, as one member of the public said, this is the time to realize the full potential and the magic of what this project has to offer for all of us. So I am grateful to everyone who had a part in the settlement. Councilmember Moore.
Yes, I just want to reiterate that we're talking about mitigation fees. These are fees to mitigate the impacts of the development, and the settlement is to avoid litigation. And the mitigation fees, we're walking away from total $77 million.
Councilmember Chow, you have a minute. No, yeah.
Can I have about three minutes to finish my statement?
Go ahead.
We must learn from history so we don't make the same mistake. Back in 2013, the council, at the time, promised to revitalize the shopping mall, but the December 2014 council allocated 2 million square feet of office space to an existing shopping mall with a building height of 167 feet, when the maximum building height in Cupertino were 45 feet in most of the city still now. In December 2014, the December 2014 council handed out office entitlements without any restriction, which resulted in the SB 35 project that does not require even the council approval. The community has no voice. In 2013, we had a shopping mall, a theater, many beloved small businesses that have been in the community for 20, 30 years. Those business owners saw Cupertino residents grew up going to their shops. These longtime small retailers in Cupertino were forced out when San Hill forced the mall to close for no reason in 2014. At the same time, other cities have actually been revitalizing their shopping malls. We all know that below-market-rate projects cannot be created without subsidies. Make no mistake, the SB 35 project already received many subsidies through state laws, density bonus, concessions, and other waiver of planning standards, plus the allocation of 2 million square feet of office space. This office-heavy project stands to make a lot of profits than many other true housing projects. If the city waives a $67 million fee for this project, which is much needed to build more below-market-rate housing, we are simply $70 million short in our BMR fund period. We are subsidizing an already very affluent developer at the expenses of the most vulnerable in our society. I cannot in good conscience support that. However, I was forced to support the settlement agreement since the city was threatened with a lawsuit. This powerful developer has a large team of attorneys so they can get their way to maximize their profits again and again, in addition to getting the state laws changed to take advantage of a mistake, a mistake of the 2014 council, to allocate office allocation without any standards, even without high limit. To protect the city from legal challenges, I supported the settlement agreement. But I would not support the waiving of almost, last sentence, almost 77 million below-market-rate or planning fee to subsidize an already affluent, just last sentence.
Let's go with another minute, please.
Affluent developer at the cost of the most vulnerable.
You can repeat the last sentence because...
I would not support the waiving of almost $77 million of fees to subsidize an already affluent developer at the cost of the most vulnerable in our community.
Councilmember Wei. With all that very passionate statement from Councilmember Chow, I think it defeated what I was trying to propose, is to move forward with collaboration. I just think that going back to history, is, there's he say and I say, okay, or she say. And let's, let's move forward. I think it's time. We move forward, make the rise a price for our community, make the best of it. As for, I really want to say, the BMR fee, we talked it over back force, so I hardly disagree with the statement from Councilmember Chow. But let's move forward. Let's really make Cupertino one city and work with the developer, which we did not choose, for sure. But we also have, if we have the heart, if we have the passion, if we have the sincerity to work together, I do believe we can make good things happen.
Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Councilmember Moore, final comments?
Sure. When I was on the Planning Commission, we were reviewing the Westport project several years ago, and we all received a memo from an attorney's office, very much like this. Memo we have in front of us is Exhibit A. And what we noticed was that we had the Valco SB 35 project using a state law to get ministerial approval, then we had the Westport project come in, and it appeared that they were essentially lawyered up as well. And we've seen some other projects come through, also using the state laws. And I would like it if we could go back to where the developers aren't using state laws to basically get whatever they want without having negotiations with the city. And this particular project is a tricky one because of that 2 million square feet of office. And I don't know if that's something that the developer is even able to sell at this point, were it to be built, if that's going to be a challenge for you. But I look at it, and I've said this many times, you're using a housing law that's going inevitably worsening the housing shortage because you have so much office. And I understand how the math worked, but I would like to see the SB 35 law used where you can look at the building, you might see ground floor retail, a lot of housing above it, and just looking at it, you can say, it's two-thirds residential, I can, I can tell. But when you add that massive office component in there, that makes me really nervous. When you have the 6,050 parking spaces for the office component, that makes me very concerned about the impacts of this project. So I hope in the future, we can work together without having developers lawyered up, and that we're a little bit, when we talk about being collaborative, that we're really doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frue, last few comments, please.
So I'll agree with Councilmember Moore on the idea that it would be nice to be able to go back to a time of convivial negotiation. And I think, though, that that's a two-way street. And it means that the city has to be able to project that it is willing to engage in that. When developers are lawyering up, to use Councilmember Moore's language, it means that we've created a rather hostile environment for that to be able to occur. It's not the case everywhere. And we can do it by changing the attitude that we're projecting. So commentary, as you heard earlier, talking about the nature of the fees and describing this as a subsidy, which I think is totally inappropriate and not an accurate description at all, doesn't help. And we need to be able to get to a better place. And we don't get to a better place by constantly relitigating the past. So I hope that we can move forward here.
Thank you very much. I think we can, we have a motion, we do have a second. And I think we, since we are done with all the discussions, we should vote by lights, please.
The motion carries with Chow voting no.
Thank you. Okay, should we take a break? Yes. Ten-minute break, please, and then we reconvene. Okay, we, this is, we will be discussing the two items that were removed from the consent calendar. Item number one, and who, item number seven, who pulled item number one?
Mayor, so Councilmember Chow pulled item number one and sent in questions that we have provided responses in yesterday's supplemental memo.
Okay, Councilmember Chow, did you still have some other questions which needed to be answered, or do you think the supplemental reports provided all the answers?
It was a community member who, after I submitted the questions, I said we will get answers, she says she still wished that to be pulled. So if the member is still here and would like have some additional comments, we can hear that. Otherwise, I'm, I just have, I just have a short comment.
You have a short comment?
I do have a comment on this item.
Okay, go ahead and make your comment, if it hasn't been addressed already.
So do we want to go to public comment then, and allow this member to speak, if that's, if that's the goal?
Okay, so you will hold your comments, Councilmember. Okay, so we will go to public comments right away for item number one, which is the annual comprehensive financial report, which was continued from, I think, a week ago, the ACFR. Let's just go ahead with the question.
Yes, Mayor, there are two hands raised virtually, and I see one card submitted by Jean Bedard to speak in Community Hall.
Okay, and Councilmember Chow, was there a specific member of the public that you wanted to hear from?
On virtually, we have Shivani Kavuluru and Rhoda Frye requesting to speak.
Okay, we'll go in that order then.
Okay.
Oh, we have a speaker in person.
Jean, Jean Bedard, welcome.
Yeah, go ahead, three minutes.
Thank you. Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Frue, and council members and staff. I'm here to express my annoyance at Councilmember Chow's request to pull this item. The ACFR is a minor administrative report that doesn't even have to be approved by council. It's not used for fiscal management. It was produced by a new auditor, so it's not surprising that there should be some minor inconsistencies. The ones I spotted were not materially significant and certainly do not justify spending more public time, council time, and staff time, coming through a lengthy, combing through a lengthy report to make it quote-unquote "perfect." Please stop wasting DIES time and public time on grandstanding on unimportant matters. It's time to focus on substantial items, not nitpicking and second-guessing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. We have Shivani Kavuluru and Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Shivani.
Hi, could you please put me in later? I'm, I'm having some trouble with connection.
You're having some, they're having audio issues, Mayor. So, okay, we will, we will move to the next person. Okay, so we will move to Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Yeah, good evening. Ms. Bedard, as quite often, is misinformed and incorrect. The ACFR is an important and required document for our debt, and our debt is regulated by the Securities and Exchange Commission. Our debt instruments require that it gets delivered by March 30th. Good practices dictate that it should be delivered by December 30th. Right now, we're in mid-July. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of, I just wanted some transparency and understand, and I'm glad there was some back and forth before the meeting, much appreciated. One, why, you know, after all of this lateness, how did the numbers get to be wrong? How did we get to this point? Number two, I noticed that when, that the ACFR had actually already been submitted to Emma, to the, that's the website for the MSRB, which is this, which is where our debt instruments, we can find all the data on municipal bonds and certificates of participation, which this is. And, and I was surprised, because the ACFR should have been approved by council before it went up there, and also, actually, by the, by the corporation, which Cupertino has created, the Public Facilities Corporation. And of course, we haven't had a public meeting for that for years. I understand from city attorney has mentioned that it will be in November. So, you know, we have to have the Public Facilities Corporation approve the ACFR before it goes up. So anyway, there was a comment that, well, yes, the, a, sorry, I'm getting over a cold, that a draft ACFR could actually be submitted without council approval. Okay, I'll go for that. So, you know, I double-checked, I went, I go back, I re-downloaded the file, and it has all appearances of being a final ACFR. And it doesn't say it's a draft. So, you know, you know, sort of the overall ask is that, let's please not put the cart before the horse, let's do things in order. And I'd like to, you know, kind of understand how we got here and how we're not going to get here again. You know, how did the errors, how did these last-minute errors happen? How are we going to fix them? How did it get, how did it get up wrong? And you all know, I also have a longstanding question about the overstatement of, of, of sales tax revenues. So I thank you for that, and this is important.
Thank you, Rhoda, that is your time. And I see Shivani has lowered their hand, but I can call on them to see if they still would like to speak.
Is she the last?
Yes.
Okay, and there's no one else, right?
Correct. Okay, well, Shivani, are you still wishing to comment on this item?
Briefly, thank you so much. I just want... I just want, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to briefly bring back the council's attention away from the misinformation that the last speaker spread and wanted to center once again the hard work that the staff has put in and reaffirm that we're not putting the cart in front of the horse. And a really good way to understand what council is talking about is to read the meeting minutes. They are publicly accessible. I read the meeting minutes. Jean Bedard reads the meeting minutes. And I think it's really important that we have these conversations with accurate information that makes sure that we are talking with integrity, that makes sure that we are conducting ourselves respectfully. I think we, as adults, need to make sure that we don't bring misinformation. We don't bring rumors or gossip or clickbait articles that are written in poor taste from bad journalists into city council meeting. Our councilmembers' time is valuable. I would love to see Robert's rules be stuck to for once. And I really wanted to thank staff once again and hope that when we have comments, we make sure that they are based in facts. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Shivani. Mayor, no additional requests to speak on this item.
Okay, so there are no public comments. Let's bring it back to council. Just for my part, as the vice chair of the Audit Committee, we submitted a list of questions to, to staff. You know, we took our own time. And the fact that, you know, it was delayed and staff had needed some time to respond to our comments, and that's the reason we put it off from last week to this week. But having seen the, all the, and believe me, we had lots and lots of questions, the Audit Committee did, and I'm sure they can, the staff can confirm that. And after we heard, got the responses back, pretty much every single item that we had not understood or misunderstood had been corrected. So I am happy with, with the ACFR as it stands now. And I just wanted to let council know that it has been vetted before the Audit Committee earlier. Councilmember Chow, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I, I really sincerely appreciate the staff for taking the steps to bring, to improve the process. It's, oh, it, I think it's important that we don't look at what went wrong in the past, but I, the city staff has really committed to deliver ACFR on time going forward. In fact, last year, the community member already brought up and asked, why are we always late? I ignored it at the time. Similarly, I thought, it's just a report, it's not important. And this is the ACFR for the fiscal year ending last June, June 30th, 2023. So we are almost one year after the close of the fiscal year. And then, two months ago, I started looking around. I find out almost every city, with the exception of La Soto's, all the other cities around us submitted their ACFR by the end of December. So then I start wondering, is there a legal deadline that we have been missing? And I went back to look at our ACFR. We have been late, I think, since 2013 or '14? Just, it has, we have been submitting it in February, in March, and then become later and later, now in July. But then I'm happy that the staff really took this seriously and they worked with auditor. This is the first year, so they are, they do need to take more time. But then I appreciate that the city manager and the staff has confirmed that. And even the staff reporter recognized the question I asked last time. The staff reporter recognized that there is, although there is no legal deadline, but there is a best practice deadline of December 31st. And then the debt financing does have a legal deadline of March 31st, which we missed. And, but then going forward, there is a commitment to try and meet the December deadline. So I would like to take this chance to really sincerely set the record straight. The community member who brought this up is correct to be asking these questions so that the city have the opportunity to improve our practices. So I really thank them for doing that so that we can take the time to find out how we can be comparable with other neighboring cities in our financial practice. So thank you, city manager. And I guess, but there is a question about the sales tax. I understand that there might be some minor correction. That's understandable. So there was a question about sales tax.
That's a misstatement, and we can get back to Rhoda afterwards.
So that's, okay, that's good to know. So, city manager, could you specify that your, your commitment for, for the next ACFR?
Of course. I mean, we never want to be late. I mean, for the record, we don't want to be late. We don't want to be on the dais apologizing and apologizing and apologizing over and over again. I think as we belated in the staff report, working with the PUN group, our current auditor was a challenge and trying to understand, and also trying to understand the process, trying to understand, work with each other was a challenge. So we don't like that. I mean, if there's a chance that we can rewind and go back in time, we don't want to be late. And we have made that commitment. The team and I made the commitment. We'll do everything we can to be on time this year.
Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't planning on speaking on this item. However, I would like, when I finish speaking, that perhaps we have a memo for council that's available to the public regarding this. So the ACFR is supposed to inform the public and the council when we're in our budget process. So hopefully, next year, it will, because it'll be the second round through with the PUN group, we'll have it earlier, and we'll be able to see what that document, what benefit it has for us in our, in our next budget. It was published, the ACFR was published to the Emma MSRB website for the Cupertino's Public Facilities Corporation. And I, for the public to be more informed about what that corporation is, I think the memo, the standing memo would be very helpful with regards to that. I know that staff is working on getting the reinstatement of the tax-exempt status, which was revoked after three years of non-filing. The filing for the IRS was stopped in 2014. At issue there is that we published the ACFR before we had reviewed it here as the Cupertino City Council because we are the directors of the Cupertino Public Facility Corporation. So I'd like that to, to potentially be explained to, to the public, how those two bodies work together. Because the ACFR needs to be published to the Cupertino Public Facilities Corporation's page on the MS, the Emma MSRB website. And also, we have not held the, we, we wear second hats. We're city council members, but we're also the directors of the Cupertino Public Facility Corporation, and we have not held our annual meeting since 2020. And where that's also an issue is that city council hadn't reviewed the ACFR to approve it, which ordinarily, that appears, and the memo can clarify that, that appears to be where we, at one time, wear two hats, director and council member, and are approving the, the ACFR. I'm not entirely sure, but I'd like to understand that better. And it may be that we really should, as directors of the CPFC, be holding a meeting to go over the ACFR as a separate entity. I have had some concern about the fact that we wear two hats and that we are actually allowing the council to decide the actions of the CPFC, those actions being to not hold meetings. And anyway, so I hope that we could have some information about that. It's pretty complicated stuff. But I think the public would like to know. I think the certificates of participation are fascinating. It's a fascinating mechanism of, of funding, and they're in the ACFR. And I think for the public's education, that would be very beneficial. Thank you.
And just for clarification, I understand that we've already issued a memo on the public corporation and certificate of occupancy participation memo. I'm just trying to understand if we need to prepare a second memo on the ACFR topic. More than happy to do that. Trying to understand the, the relevance of the two.
I think that, given that we've had this kind of a reversal of, of schedule, because it went already on to the MSRB website without having the directors review it, that that's an important distinction. And then also having an update on the failure of the CPFC to hold our annual meetings. They're annual, we haven't had them since 2020. And here, we've got a situation where the, the ACFR, because it didn't get to council before it got published, it really should have, could have gotten to the CPFC. So I think you could start with the memo, that would be great, and then add on some more information so that the public has some further, deeper understanding about this situation.
We're more than happy to repackage the previous memo if council still desires.
With the additional information. Thank you.
More comments? Councilmember Chow?
A question and a comment. So just to clarify, does ACFR require council approval or not?
It does not.
It does not, right? So it's okay to post a version to the state website, but in case we find error, we can always revise. It's okay, right?
Uh, yeah, so there, there, there is no, yeah, so there's no council approval issue associated with that. I would defer to our finance manager and the procedure for revising it.
That's okay. I don't have a lot of time. Just a short comment. I, I know that deadline is December, and that's six months after the close of the fiscal year, but I do appreciate the PUN group for bringing up issues. And it's okay to be, take, to be able to, to be a couple of months late or a month late to resolve those issues. I do appreciate if we get those issues resolved. For this one, I know that this is supposed to come to the council two meetings ago, but it was delayed in order to resolve issue. I would, I appreciate the effort to resolve those issues. Really thank the staff for, as you stated in the staff report, the fiscal year 2020, anyway, I think I've said enough.
Okay. There any other comments? Vice Mayor Frue?
Just like to move the staff recommended action.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and we have a second.
A second?
Was this the motion? Okay, okay, so we have a motion and we have a second. Let's vote by lights to adopt the ACFR.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we go down to item number seven, which was pulled by Councilmember.
Moore.
Moore. And was there a reason, Councilmember Moore?
We've also received questions and provided supplemental, a supplemental memo with responses yesterday.
And I just want to sort of caution all of us that this is the second reading, so it should be fairly straightforward because all our concerns have been, should have been ironed out during the first reading. But go ahead, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. So I want to thank staff for the responses to the questions. My questions were pretty much revolved around the proposed municipal code amendments that were made in the motion. And my concern around that, and it's really more of a procedural concern. It's happened in the past where we've had a number of changes to some code, such as the "Birds Save Dark Skies," and so many changes that we requested that the, that ordinance be changed and then brought back, rather than trying to kind of legislate from the dais and get too, too detailed at a late hour. And, and it worked pretty well, and I thought it was very fair to the public to do that. And I understand that we are now in a, in a time crunch, and we've got to push this through. But we've known about the zoning changes that have been needed to have happened for many months. So I would have preferred that these potential changes would have been brought up earlier, for one. And then I'm, I get bothered, just in general, so the other council members know this, I get bothered when we make extensive changes to an ordinance in a motion after the public comment has been closed because, you know, for one, some of these, the changes are, they're detailed. You might not understand what the change actually means, and that's why I appreciate the, the detailed response about it. And all of the council members might not know what each nuanced change is, is going to mean for the community. And so it, had we not been in a time crunch, I think it's a little bit different scenario. But I think it's, for us, it's best practices that if we're having extensive changes, we bring back the red lines with a supplemental report that says, here's all the new changes that are being suggested, and go to the public and let the public comment on it. And I think that, to me, is the, is a fairer way of, of making these changes. And that, that's really what I have to say about that. So I hope the members of the public have gotten a chance to see the supplemental reports, get a look at them and understand what the, what the added changes are and hopefully, in, in the future, that, that my colleagues will take that under consideration to provide a little more room for the public to speak. We could have alternatively have actually opened up public comment that after the motion, we could have gone back and had, had some, some more discussion. There's other things we can do. I'm sure the city attorney has some, had, maybe has some suggestions about that. Like what, what could we do alternatively if, in a situation like that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so thank you. So I actually, I understand your concern much better after you explained it. So I appreciate that explanation. So, so just from a legal Brown Act standpoint, there are no issues with the procedure. I mean, the right to comment attaches to the broader agenda item, and council can certainly make changes within the scope of the agenda item after public comment closes. But what you raised is, is more of a prudential concern, which, which I understand. And I mean, there, there, you know, the, the options to address that concern, I guess, would be reopen public comment or return for, you know, you know, with ordinance text for a new first reading. I don't think that was legally required in the circumstances we were with the first, you know, after, you know, at the time of the first reading of this ordinance. But, but it would have been an option. I think, you know, as you acknowledge, sort of the desire to, to move forward and get this ordinance adopted. So we have our fully compliant housing element was pretty paramount. So I certainly, you know, I, I, I think it's a reasonable decision to, to have some urgency to move forward with that.
And I understand that as well. And I, I wish this wasn't a particular example that, that I'm making the statement about, the understanding, the, the importance of its passage. But just kind of in general, I like to, I want to hear what the public has to say. And I don't want to feel that, or have members of the public come up to me and say, hey, you passed that, and you didn't even let me say a word about it. I feel like, like you don't care.
Right, right. And I didn't, I actually did not entirely understand your question when you asked it before the meeting, but the answer is no, there is no procedural problem. But yes, I do understand the, the concern you're raising better now.
Yeah, thank you. It's, it's really about being courteous to the public and allowing their voice. Okay, thank you.
Okay, since there are no other questions, let's vote to. Oh, sorry.
Yes, Mayor, I have three, I have three requests to speak from in Community Hall, and I see three hands raised virtually.
Okay.
Okay, so we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Claudia Bono, followed by Jean Bedard. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I appreciate this item being pulled. I was frankly a little distressed to see that this was even put on consent calendar. This would never have happened before. In that regard, yes, I'm glad that City Councilmember Moore asked about this item. I sat in here for hours, and I didn't understand what the last part of happened at that zoning meeting. I don't, I didn't, I didn't know what that email was. I couldn't read it. I felt like all of my input that I had worked hours on was completely being disrespected. I felt like all of my input that I had worked hours on was completely being disrespected, and that there were things that were being passed by the city council that I didn't even know about. This is not how we conduct city business. We don't send secret emails out, and all of a sudden, that things that weren't even agendized, they get pulled up into discussion, and then they're passed. This is what's happened at the planning commission. This is what's happened before, and I've never seen behavior like this in 24 years. I'm not going to lecture about it, because this is not the way to conduct city business. We're not trying to pull the wool over the public's eyes. That isn't why we're elected to office. I am very concerned about some of the things that happened with the zoning, as you all know. But I, as an educated adult who votes regularly, who takes care of elder members of my family, I want to know what is happening in my community. I realize now that every single corner lot in my neighborhood could have multiple housing units on it. It scares the heck out of me. We're going to have, I drive around my tiny neighborhood, and I realize that there is so little parking now allowed on these monstrous corner lots, that we're going to have cars parked in the public right of way, where people can't see how to go around the corners. We're going to have people hit on bikes. We're going to have pedestrians hit. That's what I'm scared of. This is what's happened to my city, and I want to know. I am an adult, and I am not going to stand for anyone trying to deceive me and the public. I'm not accusing anyone, but I, you know, if the governor wants to do it, I'm not voting for him. But in this regard, I'm very concerned about these zoning changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Claudia Bono, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Claudia.
Good evening again, everybody. I'm going to save 10 seconds by saying hi, everyone. Here I am. Actually, I'm going to say a little bit something different than Jennifer. I'm wondering why, this is the second reading of a municipal code. We've wasted time, a lot of time, explanation, presentations, et cetera, and voting. And here again, we're keeping the staff late, we're wasting time. And I know it's a political year, but really, guys, you should do better than that, because it doesn't look too good, quite frankly. And all we have to, I, as a genuine and a resident here at Cupertino, I worry, because delays for preparations, and everything is already being laid out, I don't understand why some of you cannot govern locally. I would say open a private investigation company. I fear that some of you will have issues with human resources, but quite frankly, governing does not equal micromanaging and statement all the time, especially during a political year. So can we please move forward? It's just a second reading of municipal code. By taking the time away from the staff and the explanation from everyone, you're just basically trying to say, hey, I'm better than you guys. This is what I found. And what I found, knowing as a resident, is that you, Liang Chow, councilmember, you keep on saying, or councilmember Moore, keep on saying residents, residents, no, it's always Rhoda Frye or just one more person. If you don't like your seat, councilmember Chow, and you prefer to give it to Rhoda Frye, go ahead and do so. But quite frankly, you're supposed to govern locally. I am not attacking you. I am a genuine concerned resident that loves what my city and wants to thrive it, but sometimes, honestly, I question what it is that you're doing on the dice. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Claudia. Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, and I'm a resident of Cupertino. This item is the second reading of a critical ordinance that needs to be approved for the city to have a compliant housing element. Time is of the essence. Now, you saw all the people earlier today who were complaining about the Schofield project, which is a SB 330 builder's remedy project. We don't want more of those. The only way to prevent it is to have a fully compliant, state-approved housing element. That means get this approved. The council can't dilly-dally on getting these modifications through. Please, please, stop making erroneous claims and about objections, and let's get it done. I urge you to unanimously approve this, because we really don't want more builder's remedy projects in this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise. And then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually.
This is Louise Sedadi, a resident of Cupertino for 38 years and going. If the council does not pass the rezoning tonight, the scrotus ruling, that's the Supreme Court, will put the city in danger of lawsuits, and HCD will not approve our housing element. So, you know, if we had a council that, in previous years, that didn't drag things on and keep bringing things back and keep trying to micromanage the staff from the audience or the podium, we would have had a housing element fulfilled a lot of requirements put by the state, et cetera. So please, just go ahead and pass this again. But I do want to say that I do want to thank you previously in council for passing the rezoning unanimously. And perhaps it was just a few people, like Jennifer Griffin, who expressed herself so colorfully, that did not understand, but it was all conducted over our, like, over an hour, things were printed, the attorney did a great job. So nothing was done in secret, it was all out there. So I want to thank you tonight for your response to the community input that you did receive. You got her a lot of community input regarding amendments to Cupertino's municipal code to implement the housing element with the rezonings that you passed on July 2nd, which will enable our housing element to be eligible for full certification by HCD. But now Katie Moore has pulled this back, so we can take it, go backwards again. But it's really critical that we do pass the rezoning. I fully endorse Cupertino's housing element for certification because of the modifications, and that there were a horrendous number of emails and residents that came to speak, not just Jennifer Griffin, who was present throughout the meeting. I look forward to the ambitious implementation of our housing element. Our public implementation is critical to endorse ensuring that the housing element meets its full potential as a planning document, so that Cupertino can keep its promises to future generations. Thank you.
And now we will move to those requesting to speak virtually. We have Sandana Siva, Peggy Griffin, and Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Sandana.
Hi, city council and mayor Mohan. Like I said before, I'm a rising freshman in college, and I'm kind of pissed that we have to look at this, relook at this municipal code amendment and housing element again, because I frankly don't feel like the, like, the council doesn't care about young people like me. It's only catered towards people who have been living here for at least like three decades. And I feel like this housing element is incredibly important for young people like me, and to build more inclusivity in Cupertino, because frankly, as, when I was growing up, I felt like I was like growing up in a bubble. So I feel like with having more housing diversity, like, proposed, like, through the rezonings with the R4 district, and the, like, new definitions of duplexes, and like, loss of, like, parking requirements, we can, like, forge a more sustainable society for the upcoming generations, and we don't have to keep sprawling outwards. And we can really show that we are a forward-thinking city, and we care about the earth and the people living in it. And I really like to thank the council and the staff for accepting this housing element from before. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandana. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Rhoda Frye, followed by Kamya Moshin. Welcome, Peggy.
Thank you. Thank you, city council and staff. Could you please display my slide? Thank you, Kirsten.
Yes.
This is the agenda item that was on the July 2nd for the housing element. It said, "Conduct the first reading of the ordinance, approve amendments to the Heart of the City's specific plan and below-market rate housing mitigation manual, conduct the first reading of another ordinance, and minor changes." Next page, please. But what happened was after public comment was over, no public comment was allowed on these changes. Yes, people brought it up, comments, but other people, not knowing that they were going to become law, didn't have an opportunity to comment. And specifically, the very last paragraph. Furthermore, I'm reading it, move that we direct the city manager to align and harmonize these standards in the upcoming objective standard, design standards, for our other zoning, and then I can't read it, feasibility and architectural flexibility. There's no explanation for what this means. And it wasn't. Objective standards were not on the agenda. So I'm asking that after public comment, that the staff and the council explain what this means. Someone said that the housing element was incredibly important. It is, and it's important to understand what was slipped in at the last minute without explanation. There have been attacks on other speakers and council, and of course, it's an election year, but that doesn't justify it. Be decent. And we do want to get it done, but last-minute changes against what the staff recommended, and then without discussion on the last paragraph? Please, please discuss it and explain to us what is coming by this, this last two sentences. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And next, we have Rhoda Frye, followed by Kamya Moshin, followed by Shivani Kavuluru. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, I'm Rhoda Frye. I'm a over-40-year resident of Cupertino, also recipient of the Cupertino's prestigious Crest Award for Public Safety. And I just feel like I have to sort of clear my name here this evening from the lobs that I've got beginning. And I also look forward to, appreciate, looking forward to a meeting with the city manager regarding the ACFR, because pretty, some pretty interesting, you know, simple questions about, you know, if we can actually, if we're allowed to submit a final, which is apparently what happened before it's approved by councils, it's just sort of, anyway, and some other things. Getting on to the issue at hand, and Peggy just put it just so simply and elegantly as she always does, really, you know, how this thing has played out, we're looking at whether it was proper, ethical, or legal, and, you know, there's different issues here, but really, you know, and one of the things that I think is really important, and what we know is important, because council said it's important, is transparency and public engagement. Those are the pillars of what the city council stands for. And I, having looked at this ordinance, it just seemed that there was an overreach into the ordinance beyond that which was described in the agenda. And I would want to see, okay, in this ordinance, what are the things that are minimally required for the housing element, and which ones aren't? And either way, let's take those ones that aren't out. Set a special meeting next week, but only work on it tonight. Say, this is what it's going to be, this is the first reading, and then go back next week and put only those changes that are required for the housing element, and call that a day. These last-minute things are just, are simply, simply inappropriate. And, and this is not, this is not my city council. This is not what we, we, that we expect to find these surprises. The other thing, I've written a number of emails on this, you know, I talked with Hong Wei earlier today, and it's like, well, they're adding 10% here. She said, well, it's only 10%. I'm like, no, it's not 10%. It's over 18%, because when you add 10% to 55 to make it 65, you're actually adding over 18% of, you know, of floor area ratio. That's a huge difference. Please, let's just do the minimum of what's required for housing element. Do your red line tonight, call the first reading, do a set.
Thank you, Rhoda. That is your time. Next, we have Kamya Moshin, followed by Shivani Kavuluru, followed by Glenn Fischler. Welcome, Kamya.
Good evening again, council and staff. I just wanted to thank you all, particularly staff, for implementing these changes, these adjustments, as was widely requested by the public, to make sure that these rezonings really make our housing element a reality, and make sure that we can take responsibility for our own zoning and land use in the city again, while also making sure we're meeting our obligations to create enough housing for everyone. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kamya. Next, we have Shivani Kavuluru, followed by Glenn Fischler, followed by Gori Chala. Welcome, Shivani.
Thank you so much. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening once again, staff and city council. I just wanted to reiterate once again that the objective standards required for the revised housing element will come in the fall, and staff clearly stated this. I also want to urge my Cupertino community members to conduct themselves with honesty and integrity. It seems to me that certain things that were very clearly mentioned and discussed were either forgotten, and that shock and surprise is being demonstrated by certain Cupertino members here today. That doesn't mean that due diligence from the council and staff side was absent. What that demonstrates is that due diligence was absent from that specific community member's side. And, and I'm speaking as someone who's also a law student, who is very, very busy. But it does dishearten me to see when I hear a councilmember state words that I generally agree with, which is, it's important to have community feedback, it's important to have dialogue with the community, and make sure that you're being as representative as possible. Yes, that's important. But what's equally important is following through with your actions. It's been over a decade since we've talked about making sure that we are in line and in compliance, and doing what we need to do to be a city that is building affordable housing and in compliance with all the zoning restrictions and all the guidelines. Compliance just means that we are following something that we already have to be following. The staff reports are clear. We have the ability to access this public knowledge week after week after week. So let's all be honest when we're having these conversations. If I, a super-busy law student, can do it and get my facts straight, and speak with logic and consistency, I really hope that everyone else here can continue practicing that tonight and not waste the council's time. and not waste the council's time. And I hope that my council members can be honest when they say they care about being a representative group and make sure that that doesn't mean they're just kowtowing to one or two members of the community, but actually being representative of the decades-long conversations we've been having, which should already tell you exactly how to vote tonight, which is in favor of everything that the staff has reported and be in compliance. Thank you for your time and I really hope to see all of us getting this off the ground. I have three gray hairs now and it's been ten years. Thank you.
Thank you Shivani. Next we have Glenn Fishler followed by Gori Chala. Welcome Glenn.
Good evening again, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruen, and city council members and staff. Um, I didn't plan on making any comments, but uh, listening to this discussion, uh, I was forced to, compelled to. First of all, I am a member of the public. I'm a longtime city council, uh, longtime Cupertino resident. And I've been getting used to these city council, city council meetings and learning about them. And what I can see is that a few members of the quote-unquote "public" drive a lot of discussions. But that's okay. I'm a member of the public too, so let me just retort. There was no deception here. I watched this, you know, evolve. I've been watching all these meetings. I saw how these uh, the motion that was passed aimed to be. I did not feel like there was no uh transparency or public engagement as some others have stated didn't exist. Please, this is a necessary part of the process to get your housing element on the books, approved, which is what we sorely need. Please finish the work tonight and pass the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you Glenn. And our final person requesting to speak before the cutoff is Gori Chala. Welcome Gori.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gori Chala and I wrote in and commented on the July 2nd meeting. I was there for the whole time that we were discussing this amendment to the municipal code, which is now here to be read, which is usually procedural, but has now been pulled for discussion. That's okay. I want to discuss it. There was no deception here. That line was on screen for me to see at home, online, and for everyone in person to see. The whole motion was up for everyone to see for much of the discussion surrounding that before it was passed by a three-two vote. What deception was there? Public comment was there. So many members of the public urged for this type of freedom for architecture, architect, so that the housing element could be implemented the way it was supposed to, so that we could honor HCD's uh requirements and actually get our housing element certified. There is no minimum of what needs to be done. In fact, when HCD sees that we are just trying to skate by and get our requirements done however we want to, they are not going to appreciate that and will certainly scrutinize our implementation of the housing element. Let's get these rezonings passed as written and appreciate the way that they were written. We cannot afford to delay this any longer. Everyone is upset about Builders Remedies project. The way you avoid those projects is by passing our housing element that is eligible for certification, which it is only eligible because of these rezoning. In fact, this housing element is only a baseline and I am very excited to see how the city will implement these and I hope for an ambitious implementation of the housing element. This is in supported by both the general public and by HCD, who is going to monitor our housing element's success via its implementation. Thank you and please pass this ordinance.
Thank you, Gori. Mayor, no additional requests to speak for this item prior to the cutoff.
Okay. So, thank you to everyone who uh called in or came in presence to express your comments. Let's bring it back to council with the, with the motion. This is uh an item that was pulled from consent. Uh, and it's the second reading. So we need a motion to um conduct, to item, uh, let's see, conduct the second reading and enact ordinance number twenty-four twenty dash two two six one and ordinance number twenty-four dash two two six two. Uh, council member Wei?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second? Uh, council member Chow, I see your light on.
It's okay. I can second that.
Are you seconding it?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, let's vote by lights.
Oh, no, I have question and comment. Sorry. So, can I ask my question?
Yes, please.
So, city attorney, is a second reading required of one ordinance to pass? That's a state law.
Yes, that's correct.
And um, so the, the second reading used to be not allowed to be put on consent until last year, right?
That's correct. Not, not, maybe not last year, but within the last few years.
Yeah. Did that new state law remove the requirement for a second reading?
No.
No. Okay. So we are just, as long as it's required, we should all do our due diligence to have a second look at the ordinance and its impact, whether you approve or disapprove it. And maybe next time it's an ordinance that you have concern with. So give people time to look, take a second look. Thoughtful staff recommendation last time already was sufficient to satisfy HCD requirement. If you sincerely want housing element to be certified as soon as possible, you should have supported the staff recommendation with no changes, rather than pushing for more changes to risk delays in approval for the advocacy agenda of some group. It is true that I did not have time to think through the changes proposed by council member Fruen in his motion because FAR is a complicated issue. And it wasn't in the staff recommendation, so I didn't really give it any thought before the meeting. The council was not given another five minutes to deliberate on those new proposed changes. All I could have done was to vote no at the time. Increased FAR means bigger monster multi-unit homes. We already have complaints now with the current FAR. Bigger homes means larger unit, units, which means more expensive units. Limits on square footage actually means smaller units and more naturally affordable units. Less parking requirements as proposed mean more people would park on the streets as vehicles are required in Cupertino with the lack of transit. This means it is more dangerous for students and everyone to ride bikes on neighborhood streets. And that's what's the impact of the new proposed changes that we were not able to consider, the public were not able to provide input on. However, I, I am seconding this second reading and supporting it now only because this is our last meeting before the August recess. We don't have any time to delay now. And I'm supporting that only because of that. I wished we just follow the staff, the thoughtful staff recommendation last time and consider these other changes at a later time when we have time to think it through. Thank you.
Okay. I see. Vice Mayor Fruen?
Yes, I, I think that it's just generally inaccurate in every way to say that somehow any of this was a surprise. There's an enormous number of comments that were made on the um rezonings that were in front of us on July the 2nd. Many of those comments were responsive to comments that were made by other members of the public. So to say that there's, you know, everything is a shock, I think is just profoundly silly and objectively false. I, in addition, frankly, there was also a, a memo that came from staff that analyzed a number of the changes that were being requested. There was no shock here. There shouldn't be. There's plenty of time to examine it, read the reports, do your own analysis. This really isn't that hard. I, I also just, I, I, I'm frankly beside myself with the claim that, that somehow us doing the absolute minimum was, was likely to actually satisfy HCD here when we were on the radar of organizations like the Housing Action Coalition. By going a little bit further beyond what the baseline was, we ensure that HCD will smile on what we were, were actually passing and that was being asked for by the advocacy community and people in our own community. Folks in our community disagree on a lot of things. We took all of their public comment. We harmonized it. We came up with something that wasn't actually everything that was asked for. Read it. Read it.
Councilmember Moore?
Um, thank you. So this is a question perhaps for Director Ben Fu or perhaps our city attorney. Uh, the question is, did you believe that our zoning ordinance that we reviewed at our first reading uh would be accepted by HCD?
I think based on the information that we had, we thought it was likely that it would be accepted by HCD. Of course, we don't know until it's actually submitted, but I don't, I don't think staff would have made the recommendation if we did not think it would be accepted.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Um, and then with regards to the, the order of events, um, so I, I took the elements of the motion from Vice Mayor Fruen and I submitted it uh yesterday morning as questions, um, so that I could have the, let, have the public see what each one of those changes would um do uh to, to the ordinance. And as I stated when we went to public comment, that it, it's my preference that if we're going to have significant changes to an ordinance, that we let it come back, have it redlined and let the public know what those changes are. Uh, in the previous meeting, uh, the meeting minutes are on page four hundred and eighty-nine, uh, the, the important ones to four ninety of the agenda packet. Uh, Mayor Mohan closed the public hearing. Motion, Chow moved and Moore seconded to approve the staff recommendation action plus a maximum seventy-foot height limit on R4 zones and a twenty percent difference between units in a duplex. Friendly amendment. Fruen made a friendly amendment to increase the floor area ratio to sixty-five percent. Chow declined Fruen's friendly amendment and it was not included in the motion. Council did not vote on this motion. Substitute motion. Fruen moved and Wei seconded a substitute motion to approve the staff recommended action as modified two. And we have items one, two, and three. Uh, conduct the first reading, et cetera, but with the following modifications reflected in a public comment to the proposed municipal code amendments, that the, with respect to the new R4 zone, that the story restriction be removed, that the change in definition of a duplex under municipal code section nineteen point zero eight point zero three zero be removed. Now, the significance of that uh would be, we would have to, have to figure that out. With respect to the duplex overlaying implementing strategy HE one point three point six, and it goes on. So these are, these are very detailed, specific changes which were done after public comment was closed. And I do think that in the, for, for the public's benefit that when we have those types of changes to that level of detail, it doesn't matter if you sent it in as a written communication. It needs to have analysis from staff so that we know what the impact is. So that's, it's kind of bypassing the process. We want to have a recommendation come from staff that would have analyzed, analyzed all of these changes and whether or not we really needed to add, add those on. Um, this also has, this agenda item also has a, the SEQA exemption with it. Uh, if staff could tell me really quickly, how many, we had forty-five eighty-eight units which we needed to provide. How many units did we actually put in the housing element? I know we went over, we buffered it. How many units did we, did we end up with? And we went over further than what we originally had as a buffer.
I'm not sure if I have the exact number, but I think it's about fifty-eight hundred or so. The buffer's twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent, something like that. We had a few sites drop out. We were initially at about thirty-five a couple months ago.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. So we've gone above and beyond on the, on the housing element, the percentages for the sites in order to try to get this passed through by, what do we have here? Twelve hundred units were over. Our previous housing element, we had, what, like ten sixty-four? Um, that, in, in that housing element, now we're up at fifty-eight hundred. It's, it's really quite a stretch. Um, and, and personally, I think it's, it's too much of a stretch. When you looked at the, uh, we didn't get an environmental impact report. We did not follow the SEQA process. It was a SEQA exempt due to the lawsuit by YIMBY. Um, and it had significant unavoidable impacts with mitigation. Um, in particular, and I think we should all be concerned about this, uh, with air quality and those air quality impacts are, they're, they're climate change impacts as well. They're going to impact your health, but when you're talking about having eighteen thousand metric tons of CO2 going into the atmosphere, that's a, a climate action, a issue, climate change issue. Um, so I, I will not be voting in, in favor of this one. We've, we've gone way beyond what we needed to and unnecessarily. I appreciate the, the, the desire to provide more flexibility. However, we already had a plan that was, that was on its way to get passed. And I think that this complicated the situation and it, it had, made an impact on the, the vote, as you saw. And I hope in the future that if council members are trying to make significant changes to municipal code, do, please don't do it at the last minute and let the public um have a chance to speak about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wei?
So, um, I must say that, sorry. I must say that I heard nothing new because councilmember Moore always has this um opinions about we're doing too much. And um, I, I feel that we're going back in circles just because some councilmembers don't get, you know, voted no, but I want to appreciate councilmember Chow and be willing to compromise. I, I do think we are going back in circles. I heard nothing new and all this, all this advice mayor proposed is in the public comments and we received multiple emails, don't change anything, change something. So nothing is a surprise to me that we're going back, but I am not in favor of going back just because you, someone didn't get their vote. Okay. I, I'm just feeling that we are going back in circles. Nothing that councilmember Moore says is a surprise to me. She already said she's not in favor of this last time. So I just feel that this is not a necessary thing to do. But if we have to go back in circles, let's do it. Okay. I, I, I fully know what I voted for and not a surprise at all. We got plenty of public comments. We got actually staff reports on quite a few of the items. So I just feel that it, it, yes, we have, if we had to go through this, we go through this. But I want to say, I heard nothing that's new. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Wei. Uh, Vice Mayor Fruen?
At the July 2nd meeting, I, I did ask staff if there would be any particular concern if we exercised our role as policymakers to make changes. That's normal. That's what we're here to do. We can also have policy disagreements amongst ourselves. That's okay. We have different values. We have different opinions. I think that's all totally normal. I really don't see what we would need to relitigate here. We had a very good discussion. There was a lot of commentary from the public. Nothing is a shock. Um, we've done this plenty of other times before. We've made plenty of, of very precise alterations in the past. Again, not a shock. So I, I really feel like we are rehashing this for no particularly good reason. Thank you.
Okay, on that note, uh, let's have a motion to uh move forward with this. Did we, we have, we have a motion. We have, we have a second. All right. Let's vote by lights then.
Motion carries with more voting no.
Okay. And that was the last item. Our city manager, do you have a report to conclude this?
Thank you, mayor. We do have a video capturing and wrapping up the summer activities. Uh, video, can you go ahead and play that video for us? Thank you.
Video, can you go ahead and play that video for us? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Chow, you have your light on. Is that by mistake?
It's for the future agenda item, if I have time.
Mayor, do we have time for agenda items?
I would like to propose an agenda item for the homeless issues. We know that the Supreme Court has passed something, and I would want to know what our staff's planning on it, so that I would like to really agendaize the homeless issues.
Okay. We need a second, Councilmember?
Moore, second?
Okay. All right. So, great. Is it the same thing?
No.
Okay. So, just a minute. So, City Manager?
If we can learn about what other cities are doing, that would be great for that. Yeah. So, the item I'd like to propose, I hope to concede, the council could consider a policy to provide access to documents made available for closed session ahead of time with proper security measures, so that the council members can read them and contemplate before and after a closed session. Can I have a second?
Don't we get that now?
No, because we, the City Manager has refused to share documents for closed session documents.
Moore, second?
And for all the other items, we do receive documents, but for one very big impact item, we are not receiving documents. So, I just hope we have a policy on that, so that we don't do it for one item, not do it for another item. It's at the discretion of the manager right now. And I don't know what's the rule.
Okay, so that goes.
There should be a policy, so we are clear.
Did you want to say something, Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I would like to propose a future agenda item. So, the city clerk used to report to the City Council, and when, back in either 1967 or 1971 around then, they changed the appointment from the City Council, making that appointment to the City Manager. And what happens when you have the clerk then report to the manager, and then we have this issue where we don't have the right to, we no longer have the right to do a public records request, for instance? It seems as though we can have information kind of prevented from us getting. And I think that this question with regards to the closed session materials is perhaps related to the fact that we no longer have the clerk appointment option. So, I think it might be worth our while to have a discussion about the appointment of the clerk and what we gain and lose by not having the City Council make that appointment. Do I have a second? Simply to discuss the topic and what's the difference when we have the manager making that appointment and when the City Council is making that appointment? Are we losing some rights?
Okay. I'll second that. I also read that the city clerk is supposed to be elected unless the city adopt an ordinance to appoint.
Through the mayor?
So, I think we have the item and the, I think the item and the second were fairly clear. So, I'd recommend not having any discussion at this time.
Yeah, that would be great. And another item I'd like to propose is to have the discussion between, for the interim city hall versus relocation versus moving the city hall for an extended period. My understanding from the City Manager is not only two years. It's likely six, maybe 10. I'm not sure.
Okay. So, again, I think we'll keep the discussion to future agenda items, please.
And just for clarification, we already have a number of TBD items on that topic.
Yeah, and then my request is to have this discussion before any consideration for purchase. So, we have an idea of the purpose.
I think that was the plan, Councilmember. That was the plan. We were going to go through a series of actions before any decision was being made. And, Madam City Manager, if you want to add to it?
I didn't, I thought my request was rejected to have a discussion on the interim city hall option before moving. So, was that request now granted? I'm not sure.
I don't know if I'm at a liberty to talk about this today, but we're happy to follow up with during our 101s.
This is just agenda request, right?
Okay. And it is going to show up on the agenda after our recess, which is in September. Okay. Madam City Manager, do you have all the list of TBD items?
I believe I do. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, great. And was that the last item? Yes, it is. And so, we, oh, sorry.
Last request is a memo that I sent through email already, but I'm not sure if I had a second. It's a memo on all of the preliminary SB 330 and Builders Remedies project that we have so far and their status. Could we have a memo on that?
I believe that request has been honored, and also it goes in line with what Vice Mayor had requested earlier during the public hearing today.
Yeah, that was only for the school field, so.
So, my plan was to combine the two and send it out in two weeks.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. That ends our council meeting for tonight. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.